All right, I'll call this meeting to order. A special town council meeting on Thursday, November 21st, 2019, at the Cameron Veterans Room, at Silver's Town Hall. Call the meeting in order. His rise for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You will call them, Madam Secretary?
Counselor Adams?
Present.
Counselor Patrón?
Present.
Counselor Daniel?
Present.
Counselor Jovan?
Present.
Counselor Lavo?
Excuse.
Counselor Manoff?
Excuse.
Counselor Marquetti?
Present.
Counselor Nash?
Absent.
Counselor Steve?
Present.
We do have a quorum. Citizens' forum? I don't see any citizens in the audience, but any council stepping down to the speakers' citizens' forum? No? Saying none? So we have three items on the agenda tonight. The first one is votes to ratify the Vola contract agreement between the town of Southbridge and Viola North America Northeast LLC for the operation, maintenance, and management of the wastewater treatment plant. Is there a motion?
Deluged.
Second discussion. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members, for being here on this important issue tonight. It's long in coming, so I'm pleased to see it's here, and I'm pleased to see that we actually had the agreement finalized for you tonight. This has been a long process. This is a process that quite frankly is more complicated than any of our negotiations with, for instance, union contracts. And it's a very technical process because you really need to understand how our sewer treatment plant works. So I want to start off by thanking a couple of people. Tyon Bond, as you may, some of you know, was their consultant for this, and they helped us develop the request for proposal. And really, the most important part of what they did was developing what's called a scope of services. What actual work does the vendor who's going to run the treatment plant, what do they actually have to do as part of this contract? And Tyon Bond did a phenomenal job in working with us, and they, both me and Heather, were very pleased at the final RFP product that we got. As part of that RFP product, we put in a sample contract. It will look some, very much like the contract you're going to see tonight, but it's a sample. So after we go through the RFP process and we do select a vendor, then we have to negotiate the contract terms, and that's what we're here tonight to talk about, the contract terms. When we were building the RFP, we went to Steve in advance to help us make sure we had a contract as part of that sample package, that RFP package, that was a good quality contract. So he's been involved sort of from the beginning of this process. In the end, we used him to negotiate really one or two little key provisions at the end. When I say they're little, they were little in nature, but extremely complicated and extremely costly in nature. So it was an important issue to bring him into to make sure it was clear. I really want to thank Heather a lot because, as you all know, she's our technical expert in this area, and Matt was a big asset as well. As we went through these negotiations, we had version after version, and Heather kept the versions and made sure that we had all the changes in place, which was really, really helpful. So she was, you know, her and Matt were doing that versioning and kept us on the same loop, and that includes Viola. So when we went through this RFP process, we chose Viola because we felt that they were the best value for the money. They scored very well in the RFP process. At the end of the day, the cost was lower, but as you know, in an RFP process, you don't have to take the lowest cost. You take the best deal, so to speak. And frankly, we all had ranked them individually. At the end, we ended up choosing Viola again. And frankly, one of the big advantages, they're already here, so there's not a lot of the transition costs that a new company might have. So that was a huge benefit. They sort of have a little bit of an advantage because of that. They don't have those costs. For the most part, as I've discussed this with Heather over the years, she's been pretty happy with the services they performed. Like any company you deal with, there's some things that you don't like, and some of those things Heather put in this new contract to make sure that we got the services we want to. And some of that is because if you have a 20-year contract, when you develop that 20-year contract, you can't think of everything. So there might have been some services we would have liked and performed that we never put into the contract. So they didn't have to perform them, even though throughout those years, we decided it would have been good if they did. So Tyon Bond really did a great job in developing the scope of services. You'll see that as in one of the appendixes here, is the scope of services. I'm going to go through the contract tonight. I'm not going to go through every detail, so if you have a section you want to ask questions about, we can stop and go through it. But I want to highlight the big issues in this contract, so you guys have a good understanding. And again, if you want me to stop in any section, stop, and one of the three of us will ask a question, depending upon what the question is. But I'm going to start, and I'm going to go through the pages, and I'm going to tell you what sections I'm on, so you can follow along with what I'm doing here, okay? So obviously, the first page has the simple agreement in first paragraph. This is a contract between us and Viola. In the bottom of the first page, 1.02, the relationship between the town and Viola is that they are contractors. They don't own any of the facility, they don't have any real control other than they're running the facility for us, but it's our facility, and that's clear in this, and it's important that that is clear. On the next page, where you get into the appendixes, it just shows you a list of the different appendixes, and we could talk about them later, but obviously, Appendix A just describes the plant facility itself, because we need to talk about what it is they're running. Scope of services is what I talked about. This is the work that we want them to do. That was what was detailed out, working with Heather and with Tyon Bond. Insurance requirements, like any contract, we have requirements in there for insurance, and we'll talk about those later. This is a 20-year contract, and there's got to be an annual fee adjustment. As costs go up, there's a formula that's drafted for that. There's vehicles that the town owns, cars and things, that are part of our ownership, and we have, those are our assets, and just defining who they are and that they have the use of those vehicles for the purposes of running the facility. Billable rates for underground asset repair, that's for work that Heather would like them to do, that's not directly plant-associated all the time, so it gives us a process to have them help with all the underground assets. So we're talking really sewer lines and things like that. Form of general bid, the form of general bid is the actual bid dollars, that's the actual amount they bid during the RFP process, the submittal, and that's the forms that we require them to fill out when they did the bidding process. The last thing is Southbridge is a five-year affluent loadings, and Heather can talk more about that, that's part of the operations of the plant. 2.01 is the term. Now, we came to the town council early in this process because we wanted to talk about a term here. Most of these contracts throughout the state are 20-year contracts. We wanted to make sure the town council was okay with that 20-year contract, because that was going to be part of the RFP. So this is a 20-year contract, but it's broken down into four five-year contracts. Now, a big benefit in this particular contract that I'll talk about as we go along is that we can get out at the end of every year with a 16 notice at the end of the year, if we want to get out for our own convenience, we can get out of this contract. Viola can't, but we can. So that's really a positive thing for us. If we leave, and every term is a five-year term, if we decide that we are not going to renew them after the first five-year term, we have to give them a six-month notice. Now, the good thing about that is it's important. Six months may sound like a lot, but we have to transition from one facility, one operating to another. Six months is nothing, so, but it gives us time to transfer to some other owner if we need to.
You're saying the owner can negotiate this?
Yep. Yeah, he's telling me to say it, so, right. 3.01, scope of services, that's what I was talking about. That's what Tyon Bond helped us to develop, and that's all spelled out in Appendix B. Regulatory compliance in 3.02, we're really talking about that the contractor has to meet all the regulations set up by state and federal government, and if they don't and they get fined, guess who's responsible for the fines? They're responsible for the fines. If they do something that doesn't meet the requirements, they are responsible for fines, but they can contest that fine with the governing agency to argue about it. Gus?
Yeah, I do have a question. Okay. I just, I was concerned a little bit, because I meant to maintain client compliance with current state and federal requirements, and I was thinking, it would make sense maybe if we do a phrasing, as they may change from time to time?
So current requirements would be at the time, it doesn't matter. As current, as requirements change, they're always current in this case, so it's not like you have to, no, no, it's not as of today's day, it's the current requirements throughout the life of the contract.
That's what I was hoping it was meant, but I was thinking like MS4 changes and things like that.
Nah, it doesn't, all of that stuff, whatever the requirements are, they have to follow that. And again, if that changes the scope of services, let's say their requirement is expensive to do, and they can renegotiate that scope of services, we'll talk about later. There's a process for rediscussing scope and renegotiating costs as it relates to scope. Okay? Makes sense? Okay. Going down to Article 5, Section 401, time responsibilities. The town shall pay all expenses related to disposal of screenings, grit, scum, and grease. That's part of the original contract. There's nothing new about that, but I just wanted you to, we wanted you to know that that's separate. And the town pays all sewer use fees, so any fees that the town does, we have to pay for them as part of the contract. Next page, I'm going to get on a few more paragraphs, where it says, "Town shall provide for contractors' primary use of all vehicles and equipment presently in full time." That's what I talked about. That's that vehicle index in Appendix E that defines the vehicles and that they can use them, okay? We're responsible for the maintenance and repairs of those vehicles as long as they're not negligent in the use of them.
Right.
Ms. Chair, do you want me to just answer Gus's questions, or do you want me to go through yours?
Okay, there, actually, I just noticed there's a kind of, it's either redundant or slightly contradictory. The town shall provide the contractor with valid and proper access to the state.
Can you, can you slow down, because I can't understand what you're saying?
The town shall, it's the first paragraph on the top of Page 4, okay? It's kind of in contradiction of the second paragraph under 4.02. They're somewhat redundant, but the second one is actually better for us.
So the first paragraph just says it, because we are tax-exempt organization?
And that's fine.
Then they don't get charged for taxes if they're under our tax exempt?
I understand that, but my point is, is that the second one, the second one specifically states for, made by the contractor to fulfill its obligations under this agreement, as opposed to being used for some other thing?
The second paragraph of 402?
4.02.
The second paragraph?
Yeah. It says, they basically say the same thing, except that that second one, that last phrase actually is more protective of the town.
It's, but they're two different responsibilities. One is for us to show that we are tax-exempt, and the other is their responsibility. So this is ours, this is under us.
Town shall provide contractor with any applicable certificates of exemption from state tax, says the same thing.
Income taxes, sure.
Except that the second one says that they can only use it to fulfill its obligations under the agreement, which the first one doesn't actually say that.
But that's not their obligation, that's our obligation, town's responsibility. So it says we have to supply it, not that they're, you know, and this, their obligation is that they can only use that, what we supply, to be for them.
For what? For the contractor's facility.
Let me have the attorney.
I just, it's often, it's common that it's an obligation of the tax-exempt entity to provide the... Sure, and I get that, I get that, sure.
Could you let me finish?
To provide the certificate, right? And then we want an obligation of the contractor to use it, so that when they purchase goods as agent for the town, they don't pay a sales tax, so it doesn't go to the operational costs. So we don't want that added. We want the benefit of our exemption, so I think, I don't disagree that perhaps they could be better worded, but I think the first part is, we have an obligation to provide it, they have an obligation to use it, so that we don't pay sales tax as part of their operational costs.
Makes sense. Okay. Okay. I'm going to continue. I'm going to go to Article Representations 5, and I'm going to go down to Sub B. This is pretty just plain, but you understand that the contractor, all the employees have to have the professional licenses and certification required by law. So we want to make sure that all their employees have the necessary training and licenses they need to operate, okay? This next section, 6.01, was, 6.1 and 6.3 that are tied together, was the point of contention for quite some time. And I talked to a few of you kind of independently about this, particularly, I think, the chairman and maybe others, but the issue is here is liability and who's responsible for, to us, the big issue here was negligence. If they are negligent, they should be responsible for their negligence. In the first contract we have for 20 years, there was nothing about that. But in recent contracts that these companies are doing, and it's not unusual in any type of contractual like this, companies are always trying to limit their liabilities. And it wasn't a big surprise that they came to us and wanted to add a provision to limit their liabilities within this contract. And when they first gave it to me, they wanted to limit their liability within the annual fee. And, you know, we, me and Heather, before it even got to Steve, had serious concerns about any limitation of liability, particularly as it relates to negligence. So this indemnity clause, I'm just going to read kind of the first paragraph. "Contractor shall indemnify, defend, and hold the town and its officials, employees and agents collectively to town, and done harmless from and against any and all third-party liabilities, losses, fines, penalties, damages, costs, actions, expenses, claims, demands, liens," and it keeps on going on. And then you get to B, which is a little bit farther down, it says, "The negligence or willful misconduct of the contractor." That was a big part of this issue, that limitation for negligence. And frankly, it was one of the issues where I just wasn't going for it, period, and I went to war over this issue. And it was, me and Steve had talked a lot about what this means and where we should draw a line, and they fought and fought and fought about this issue, trying to get a limitation liability, right up until the last couple of days. I was concerned that we weren't even going to have a signed contractor today because of that issue. And Steve had, I can get more, talk more about this, but he actually went to another attorney on the corporate side that deals with indemnifications and liability, and we came to an agreement that we think, and we're very comfortable with in terms of liability. We don't believe that for negligence anymore, we have any liability. We feel that this provision is solid in that respect. And if you have any more questions, I'm going to let Steve talk about the technical side of that. But after a lot of review, we've got to a place that we feel is a comfortable place for the town to be. Steve, you want to comment anywhere about that? I may give a decent description?
Sure. It actually relates to the second paragraphs in 6.03, which was where the contractor, as proponent, responded under the RFP, originally sought to limit their liability. As the town manager said, their original proposal was to limit their liability to the costs or expense of the annual fee paid, and that was a nonstarter with us. And then there was this kind of prolonged negotiation of where we settled on this term. But within this term, they have a cap on their liability of $4 million for the company for each five-year term of the agreement, but the coverage, the insurance coverage is not subject to the cap. So we increased the general liability insurance originally, now, that was an old agreement, but it was $1 million per occurrence, $3 million annual aggregate. We increased it to $3,006,000.
Just, you know, that happened like yesterday, to get that done.
But also, and relative to the town manager's point that what's not subject to this cap is if you see in this, the exclusions from the cap of $4 million per five-year term, and we originally started with a $4 million cap per year, they didn't accept that, is in that Romanet 2, the contractor's obligation to indemnify the town as set forth in this agreement. And that's the provision, the town manager was just reading, 6.01, that the contractor is obligated to indemnify the town for its negligence. So we have coverage outside the cap for their negligence and any performance under this contract as it relates back. Now, you know, you can't get a contractor to insure entirely all risk for operating our plant, but this does, I think, you know, get us the benefit of protection from their insurance coverages, as well as if you exhaust the insurance coverages, up to their $4 million cap for their negligence. So that would be $7 million or $10 million, depending on.
Think about why this could be huge, and why this was such an issue to me. And again, you have to, in this situation, you have to think of what could happen. What's the worst-case scenario? And I was thinking, and again, I'm no technical expert here, but I'm thinking the bidding pours into that river. What could the cost of that be? If it's a $6 million, and it's done because of their negligence, we're capped at a million, they walk away with a million, and we're stuck with a $5 million bill for the river. It wasn't going to happen, period. I couldn't get on that path. And I don't know that that will ever happen. It's never happened in 20 years, they've had it. But what if it did? And that's what, that's where we spend a lot of time of protecting what the wildest-case scenario might be, so that we didn't get hit. That's why this was so important, okay?
One other point, what relates to that as well, we have a standard of care for the services, which is the last paragraph on Page 2. It just reads, "The contractor shall exercise the degree of skill and care customarily accepted as good professional practices and procedures by members of the same profession currently." So that's, that's how you get to tag someone with negligence, is if they deviate from what's known to be a standard of care.
Right.
And then all of those terms operate. Now, ideally, we'd have no limitation on their liability, but beyond their insurance coverages, I don't, I don't know how much some contractors could sustain in payment, you know?
Yeah, I get you.
Sure.
Okay.
Good question.
Yeah, I do. Observation and a question. One is that I like the fact that there's specifically lines in here exempting claims brought against the contractor by third parties, because that made me immediately think, honestly, a philanthropy lawsuit, because that could be huge, and I could easily imagine somebody coming down the pike with environmental lawsuits against facilities like our sewer plant that could be equally costly. So something, so that, I think that's good. The one question I had is I noticed that there's a couple of references in this section to, oh, where to go again? Negligence and willful or willful misconduct. And, but there's one line under 4.01, it's just negligence or misconduct. Is there a legal distinction between the two?
4.01?
Yeah. The last paragraph of 4.01. Town's liability hereunder shall be restricted to instances of its negligence or misconduct.
Right.
And also the other phrases are negligence or willful misconduct. Well, willful misconduct, I think, is a more aggravated act, perhaps, of an intentional, I'm not certain, I don't know if there's much of a difference, really, but... Especially in this case, our liability is restricted to incidents of negligence or misconduct, and it'd also be willful misconduct? If they're subject to willful misconduct and we're subject to a weaker standard? Yeah, I don't know how much weaker it is. You know, to me, willful misconduct and misconduct aren't so far apart. They're probably not too far apart, no. But I don't, I don't object to trying to get that in.
Yeah.
I don't think it changes much, though.
Yeah, I don't see it as significant enough, to be honest with you, Gus, they're trying to change the contract. It's very, very minor in nature, but...
And I read that correctly. One, the willful misconduct relates to theirs, their conduct, and misconduct just relates to us, right?
Yes.
That's better for us.
Yeah, better for us. That means we have to be at a lower part than they do. If they have to, they have to be willful, but we basically have to prove that they wanted to do it, whereas they can say, well, you did it by accident. It still constitutes, it might still constitute misconduct, which would be to our detriment. I hope that's not the case.
Again, I mean, I think it's marginal, let's see if you're...
It might be, it might be. Yeah, willful misconduct and misconduct, as I say, I think are pretty close to one another. I don't know how much difference there is by inserting it, but I mean... Is there a legal, is there a legal distinction? But what's the legal definition of misconduct? Is there? I'm not, I'm not certain. I mean, I know negligence, but misconduct would be, I would think, is an intentional bad act, and so I don't know how willfulness modifies it, but that's my... I don't know either. Yeah. That's my...
And if misconduct's going to be written, it's going to be a trial of facts anyway, whether it was misconduct or not.
True.
You know, so, I mean, it's...
I mean, if this board were to approve this tonight, if you wanted to reserve that, if just, you know, pending a request to get that inserted, I could, I could do that.
I don't know if they're going to carry it.
Yeah, I don't think it's a significant issue. Yeah, it's not, it's not a significant issue, I just wanted to point it out.
So, are you all set? Are you all set? Going again? Okay. So insurance is what we talked about. You'll just see that defining their amounts in Appendix C, that's what the insurance is under 7.01. The town obviously has its own insurance for the property, that's just what we have in 7.02. Compensation is the payment for services, so when they bid, they bid a specific amount for the contract, and that, that's defined in Appendix D. That's the actual bid amount in the process for that. I'm going to go to 8.04, public health and safety emergencies. If something happens at the facility, it's an emergency that might cause an issue with public health or break regulatory plants, all this basically says is they have the right to fix it without having to call us and tell us. If it's an emergency, they're not going to wait around to find out if we're not around on the weekend, they're going to just take care of it, and that's fine. So that's what that, that is. 9.01 is the termination default I talked about. This is a really important part for us, because it allows us, if we were really unhappy with something they do, we could give them notice 60 days in the end of the year and get out of the contract. I talked about this earlier. That's on any year of the contract, and then again, maybe five-year term, we can get out too with a six-month notice. So there's various ways that we can get out, but they can't get out, okay? The nice thing about this, and you'll see it in the second paragraph, in the event of termination, the town has a first right to hire any full-time employees at the plant. So obviously, if they leave that plant, the employees are still there, we would want to keep that skill level, so we have the first right to hire them.
That's good. However, I noticed that there's a conflict between 8.02 and 9.01. It says, in 8.02, it says, "The contractor reserves the right to suspend or terminate services should payment of outstanding invoices not needed to be be 60 days overdue." In 9.01, it says, "In the case of a breach by the town for non-payment of contractor's invoices, contractor may terminate only after allowing the town 30 days to cure it."
I think this triggers this.
60 days. Okay, so 8.02, I understand. Where's the next one, Gus?
9.01, it's the, actually, the last two lines of the page.
First paragraph?
The second paragraph. "In the case of a breach by the town for non-payment of contractor's invoices, contractor may terminate only after allowing the town 30 days to cure," as opposed to 60 days up in 8.02.
So the first one, though, and again, I'm trying to read off the cuff here, the first one is, is when they have to pay us, or when we have to, we notify them, and they have a certain amount of time to pay us, 60 days, right?
No, no. That is, the contractor reserves to suspend or terminate services if they're not paid within 60 days.
Okay.
And now, down here, it says they can do it within 30 days.
No, I think this triggers their right to say that they're going to terminate the contract, and then after they say they're going to terminate the contract, we have another 30 days to cure it.
Yeah, because it says in the event of termination, right?
So basically, they could write us a letter saying they're going to terminate the contract. This means we have another 30 days once we receive that letter that...
The first three couple of words, in the event of termination, yeah.
Then I think, I think probably needs to be clarified that, because I read that as saying that they could do it within 30 days.
Yeah, but if you read the first line, Gus, it says, "In the event of termination."
No, I said it.
So this paragraph only works to the actual, if it's already terminated. But the section is to the, to the event of termination.
Right. So the way I read this, if I...
No, but I read that...
Go ahead. The way I read this is, they have the right to suspend or terminate it, so they only have the right to suspend.
Right.
All right? And then it says, "In the event, in the case of the breach for non-payment, they may only terminate it after given 30 days to cure it."
Yeah.
So they have the right to do it, doesn't mean they can't. They have the right to do it. So that doesn't, that says, to me, if I'm reading this correctly, and Attorney Meadows, you can correct me, it says, "They have the right to suspend or terminate, but they can't suspend or terminate unless they give us 30 days to cure that breach."
Yeah, I read that, I understood that. But I read, I read 8.02 as saying that we actually have 60 days to solve it.
Oh, 60 days. They have 60, they have the right to suspend it.
Yeah, I get that.
Right? After 60 days. Just the right to suspend it. They can't suspend it unless they give us another 30 days to cure that breach.
In addition. This is an addition.
That's an addition.
So this.
Am I correct?
I agree. That's a 30-day cure period before you can terminate.
Yeah.
So.
Doesn't, it's just.
They're two different terms.
They have to wait till an invoice is unpaid for 60 days and then we have 30 days to cure it and then they can terminate.
Okay. Let me just see something. An invoice is going to train following after 30 days to cure, okay. So 30 days to cure is that, that's the line.
Okay. Okay.
All right, anything else on that section?
I'm going to just hear also about the paragraph above that in 9.01, where it says 60, the 60 days there, 60 days notice there. And that we can be, that, that, wait a minute. That we can terminate them with 60 days notice. Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's our notice. Although truthfully, in all honesty, I don't think we would ever terminate with 60 days notice because we could never turn around control of that facility in 60 days.
No, probably not.
You know, we would, if we were going to do that, we would give them a lot more notice and, because we just need the time for us because we have to follow the procurement processes, right? And you saw a line, so that 60 days is, is more just to kind of open up the discussion. It's about, you know? Sometimes we might go to terminate and decide not to after negotiations occur as a result of, did they cure it or not? Whatever that, whatever that issue was.
And even if we do, I saw there was a clause in it somewhere saying we can also have them stay here for another extended period. I don't know what.
Yeah, we need to protect the operation of the facility in, in transition.
Right.
Okay, I'm going to move to 10.01, assignment. Obviously, we don't want them to assign the right to run the facility to some other company. That's what that is. It just stops that. Same thing is true of subcontracting. We don't want them to hire subcontractors, although me and Heather had a lot of conversation about this because sometimes you might lose an employee and sometimes it's very difficult to find employees in the short term. So we wanted to give them right on a temporary basis to subcontract to an employee, to get a temporary employee until the time we can get a permanent employee in place. And that, I think that's just a recognition of the marketplace and trying to find people that have this specialty. So that's why there's a little bit of flexibility in that. Moving to dispute resolution, obviously there's a dispute. We don't really want to go to court. So we put in a process that allows us, it would be whoever the executive is with the town at the time or the, in the executive facility would have, you know, would have negotiations in order to try to do everything they could to avoid a court process. So with a long-term, that's important. Yep, I'm going to skip. And again, I'm hitting the key sections. If you have looked at some section, I want to talk more about it to have it. Next part is just the, you know, who the notices and stuff are sent to. I'm going to go all the way down to 13.01, which is the scope changes. Again, things could happen through the 20-year life of this contract that we might want to change the scope. You have to have a process for how you change that scope and what the cost of those scope changes are and how that's done. This sets up that process to have that ability to make the changes as we go along. And obviously, if there's a scope change, it's probably going to be a contract change, which means it's coming to town council for approval because it's going to be a contractual change. Make sense? Okay.
I want to put a question.
Go ahead.
A change of scope, maybe for when and as contractors' costs are providing. Is there any impact if we find that our costs are, that any outside costs that we may end up seeing having to do, having to do with sewer services increase?
How could that be possible?
I don't know offhand, but.
How would that impact them? That doesn't, that just impacts our raise.
But if, but it affects us, but it has to do with the sewer services. I don't, I don't know if that would happen.
If something happens, it's our responsibility and our cost increase. We wouldn't go to them for a scope change. We would pay for it, whatever that costs is. Because it's not a scope change. It's us having to change something. A scope change would be defined in this contract as it refers to them running the company and things that happen to the company. If the scope changes, it's not in this contract. It's entirely, we would have to pick up the cost of that to charge for so.
So, oh, you're saying could we add it to their scope afterwards? Like negotiating something if we decide that.
Something, something that was really costing us, which should really be on their shoulders.
Then we, if, let's say.
Or should be added to their contracts just to make it simpler? It wouldn't be on their shoulders because it's very clear what is on their shoulders and what is included in here. Anything, we would have to negotiate an amendment with them, just as anything else.
Well, and we can, again, that almost sounds like you want to add to their.
Right.
If you want to add to the scope, we can negotiate that change. But it would be in addition to their scope because it, it wouldn't have been defining their original scope. So, but yes, it can be done, but it would be different, you know? It would be actually kind of, in some ways, it'd be the same process, except we would be adding to, asking to add to their scope instead of it just happening, right? With the facility. Okay, moving to the next thing is the procedure for negotiating a change in scope. So 13.02 is just the process. And again, at the end of the day, it comes to the managers of both groups to work out the scope changes and bring it forward to their respective, you know, parties. The next thing is something that Heather thought was really important. It's 14.01. These are additional services at town's discretion. There are underground sewers and stuff that may need some type of repair or something that's not in here. Heather wants the ability to have them do the work since they already have the equipment site. But we obviously get a lower cost, they're already on site, they already have the equipment. So those optional things there are things that Heather can work with them and negotiate. I think actually you might even have a timing. Did you have a timing?
There's a timing materials cost.
It's in one of the appendixes?
Their hourly rates, they're on one of the appendixes.
Appendix F, actually. So, so that's built into Appendix S, the timing materials cost for that kind of stuff.
Heather, was that in the original agreement or this new?
Nope, this is new. This wasn't in the original agreement and it's one of the things that, you know, it's hard to put in. You don't want to say, well, we want you to do this many of this in the agreement because we don't know how many we want or how, what we're going to run into. But this gives us the flexibility of assigning them just to go out and ask at these hourly rates. Now, the other option we have is we can go out and get bids and prices from other companies and make sure that they're competitive. But it kind of gives us already that one, which actually helps us because there's not a lot of people that do this.
So like Morris Street.
Like Morris Street, correct.
So it's, it's built into the contract. So rather than wait to try to get that, you could say, this is how much feed I need. How much is it going to be? It's already built in price, so you, you can estimate pretty much what it's going to cost you.
Yes.
Right?
Yep, exactly. Whether it's repairs, whether it's additional TV cleaning, even for, you know, we mentioned stormwater and a lot of things, but even if we wanted them to jet truck our, some of our stormwater lines, which we're going to have to do, we actually have a built-in, know already what it costs to do.
It makes it easier for you too because you can just schedule it in, right?
Correct. As long as we have the funding and the budget, I already have a rate.
Right, makes sense.
Contract rate.
Do you have another question?
How would this tie into, I know, I've seen in the biweekly reports occasionally, you'll mention in passing references to that you have contracts to do certain number of miles for.
Well, so they're in this contract, right? In this contract, they already have, they still have their set contract number of miles that they have to do. But this would be anything in, in addition to that would be exceeding that. So like stormwater. Or if we say, you know what, this prop, this area, I know you already met your contract obligation, but we're really having a problem over here. We need you to go out and TV and inspect this section of line.
That makes sense. Yeah, the price already.
Okay, we're all set. Next section is 14.02, Capital Program Management Services. Now, they do some minor stuff for already. When we do our capital budget, sometimes they'll do some small engineering work or little, little kinds of things. They, you know, remember when, when we asked about the capital program for them? They helped give us all the information for capital, what we needed to do and stuff. This is larger than that. This is if there's going to be a larger project that we have to go out and bid for. We might ask them for some design work or some procurement service work. This gives Heather the option, as long as we stay within the 30B process, to use them for helping do some capital program management stuff. Okay? All right. Next page is just the signature page, page 14. Okay, so that, that's, as you see, it's already signed by them. It's all set in that respect. I'm going to go through the appendixes and I'll go through briefly and Heather can talk about some of the technical stuff. Appendix A, I think I told you, is just the definition of the plant. You have to outline what facility we're giving them and a description of what the facility is.
Includes the 48.
I'm sorry?
48 miles of gravity sources included.
Yeah, including the infrastructure out, out of the plant. So it's not just a plant. Appendix B is the scope of services. This is what I told you, it's developed by Time Bond. So this is all the wording of that scope of services. This what was in the original request for proposal document. And that goes on for a number of pages. This is really the work, a lot of work with Heather and Matt and Time Bond. And I was part of it, but the technical aspect is definitely their territory and they did a great job of putting it together. So we're going to keep going until we get to page 28. This is the insurance coverage that Stephen was talking about. This was a nice add-on at the last minute. We thought it was a win, but although they kind of offered this upfront anyway, but wasn't in the original contract. This was over and above what we had originally asked for, so they gave it to us, so we added it. But it became a last-minute, I'll call it addition by Steve. It was a real, was a win for us. It was a nice little win. So appreciate Steve, we ended up at the last minute getting that done. Appendix D is the annual fee. This is the adjustment. This is a formula driven by CPI that Heather worked with. I think it's the same formula from the last agreement, if I'm correct, Heather, is it?
It's, it's going to complicate my answer here. So this was the formula that was in the original agreement. There was an amendment to the original agreement that changed the formula, that made it a proportional formula that had both the CPIU and the trash water, wastewater CPI adjustment. Now, unfortunately, what, we kind of went, Time Bond and we kind of went through the different options of what that meant. And basically, what it came down to is when you add in that other factor, that other CPI, it, it just kind of convolutes things. Plus the fact that it doesn't come out on a monthly basis, so that we were always running into this when we were doing the other ones, where we had to wait for the CPIUs to come out and it was lagging in our contract and it was, it made the timing really more difficult than it needed to be. Plus the CPI for the trash and the sewer thing actually goes up, has historically gone up quicker than the CPIU. So we said, you know what, let's just go back to the general Boston CPIU and not deal with this other factor, which was complicating the calculations and making us do multiple tables. Karen just left. But whenever we had to go and get the tables for the CPIU and trash, because we don't have to do it once a year, it was most, it was like this, okay, how did we do this? How do we get on the website? How do we find all this information? How do we confirm all this data? This other factor is much easier and it's not as complicated or convoluted, so.
Um, yeah, okay. One question I caught is, how come it's set as a minimum of 2.2%?
That's part of the contract.
And the calculation you use, however, is 1.03%?
It's, it was just, it's just an example.
Well, I understand that, but I was thinking that if the, if the decrease, if the increase in the CPIU is.
No, 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 this is, this is the 5% change.
Yeah.
This is the CPIU. That's different. That's a factor that you get from that. And then that's how you do the change.
How does this affect us if the, the change is actually below 2%? That would.
It gives them a minimum, yeah. And that's how we bid the contract. You can't change it now. That's, that was in the original contract too. So that's what we followed.
Have we ever had times in the past, like 10 years, that it was below 2%?
Oh, yes.
Yeah?
Yep.
We had, so.
Yeah. Truthfully, until two years ago, it had nev, since I was here, it had never been above the 2%.
That doesn't surprise me. How much, how much did that cost us?
I wouldn't know that off the top of my head. But I can also tell you that it has approached the 5% also in historic. So it's a give and take. You want to be able to control your costs within a range.
Well, I understand that totally.
If you took it on the lower end, you'd also have to up it on the upper end. So you want to stay in that sweet pot, spot almost of that cost.
Makes sense. Hmm, it makes sense.
You're limiting your, both left, both.
So Appendix E is the vehicle listing. Obviously, throughout the 20 years, this will change because this is as vehicles get added in and taken out. This will have to be adjusted as we go through the process. Appendix F, we've talked about this, is that underground asset repair I talked about earlier. This is the, the timing materials for, for that. Appendix G is just a form of.
So those available rates, because it's within the contract, when you go to prevailing rates, is that around the prevailing rate? Rates or is that?
Yeah, you know what? They probably, that's probably pretty similar to what a prevailing rate rate would have been. Actually, those O and M, those are low compared to like a labor rate even. So, um, yeah, those aren't really that bad.
No, they're not. That's what I'm saying. So that's why I'm saying.
Yeah, no, looking at it that way.
If you were looking at a project and you said, well, on an emergency repair.
Right.
Then you're going to have to go to prevailing wage for that. So it's built in to, you're pretty close. But because it's part of the contract, we're just doing it as part of the contract.
Okay. Uh, Appendix G is just a form of the general bid. This is the actual bid that they, they came in and I think, we got to go to page.
Well, actually, you go to page three. That's the total. On page three, 5.3, base bid.
1, 3, 7, 3, 949.
Point three is a million, 373, 949.
Yes, that's the bid.
I think that's later in the bid too.
Actually, it's broken down with the base and the profit. So you see both.
So later on, they have it marked down as a million, 236, 554.
Plus the profit equals that.
Oh, that, okay, yeah. So just add the 137 to it. That's on the, the last page too. That's actually what I was going to hit. But she just picked up the earlier amount, which includes that amount. Okay. Anyway, this is the, the terms of the contract. That's the first year, and we did, this is the first year annual. After that, it's then formally driven by the, by the annual fee, annual, annual increase. But that's the structure. Uh, I think that is really the terms that I wanted to go over with. I think that gives you all the major terms and that's why I wanted to give you an opportunity as we went through it, if you had any other questions. But I hear that everything I think is, is not the normal standard kind of language stuff, so.
Did you have anything, counsel, that you, that you brought to attention? Well, if the town council is going to authorize the town manager to enter this agreement on behalf of the town, if you would reserve on the annual fee adjustment, we had entered dates to establish the base year for the determined cost. We're going to, we'd like to reset those dates to current dates so that the base, because we were optimistic about entering this in August, that we'd get it done by then and that's.
That's in Appendix D, page 29, just to what, leave those dates open so we can adjust them.
Yeah, just, I want town council to be, to, if they're going to authorize this, that they would acknowledge that we will reset those dates to appropriate dates to establish the base year.
Yeah, so it will be December 1st.
Yes.
Yes, and then we'll, we'll select the proper month just previous to that so that we will have time to be able to calculate it.
Right.
Do, do we need to amend the motion for that or is it?
Oh, do you have a draft motion or?
That we can add the motion, both of them.
Oh, okay. Technical change, but that's a, I don't know.
I don't know if you either want to just, I don't know if you need to vote it. If you just tell me that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, technical changes don't necessarily need votes of council.
The only thing I think I do have to amend on this agenda item would be to commence on December 1st, 2019.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
What's the agenda, I'm sorry?
Because we didn't have a date to commence.
No, we never dated that time, correct? So you're just adding that date in? Okay. Yeah, that, that's the date that's actually in the.
I don't expect any objections from Viola on that.
Well, they put the date in. They put the December, they were.
No, I think we.
You mean the change in the appendix dates?
Oh, the appendix, I think it's December 1st.
Questions, counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Heather Ron. When I read this, it says billable rates, Appendix F for underground asset repairs. Does this mean that they're billing us back for the jet truck, the vacuum?
So that would be if it, if.
But we own the equipment?
Yes.
And they're billing us?
No, this would be additional equipment.
Okay.
This would be equipment that if they had to bring additional equipment off-site. So last year, our jet back truck broke.
And they bring one in?
Right.
Fair enough.
So this is kind of so that we have a built-in backup if we need it. Or if we need to bring a second truck in for any reason, then we have the ability to do that under the contract.
How many years have we subbed the wastewater treatment plan out?
20 years.
Over 20.
Over 20 years?
Because this isn't even the first, right?
So the, the contract's got a 20-year clip, so there might, there's previous to 20 years. But 20 years prior is a clip. So the contract we're just setting is a 20-year contract, but she says it started before that.
Has there been any thought or conversation about keeping this in-house? Significant cost savings?
I don't, I don't, and I'll let Heather speak because she's more the technical expert. But in, in the towns I've managed, in particular my hometown, which has a big sewer treatment plant, the technical expertise is one that's hard to find. Towns don't have the technical expertise to run it. Now, you can try to hire that, but it's almost the same thing as hiring a vendor because you don't have the technical expertise in-house. So I don't know, my hometown doesn't, they, they vend it out. Anybody I've ever dealt with has always vended it out. So is it possible? Yeah, but I, as a town manager, most town managers I know would not have the knowledge about how to run a facility to hire, you know, would have to start from scratch and figure it out, so. You'd probably end up with a consultant company to go through that whole process as well, I'm just not sure it would give you any any real savings from it, because. When we hire employees, we have to pay the pensions and all the benefits, they're usually higher than the private sector, so. The cost of that probably would be higher, Joe, than the the vendor cost, that's my guess, but I'm not, you know, the consultant would have to tell us that for sure, but I would suspect that the case.
Yes, sir, definitely towns that operate their own wastewater treatment plants. But the issue then becomes some of the, having the technical expertise of staffing to be able to run, because these are high-grade plants. Our plant is a very high-level grade wastewater treatment plant, so getting the qualified operators and keeping enough qualified operators there, because it's also a very covenant. They they get paid very well, and they're very sought after, so if we had our own employees and somebody, Viola operates in Sturbridge. They would come and poach our employees with those letters, and then we'd get in trouble, because we wouldn't be able to replace them with the staff that we needed to have there and operate. By putting that on the contractor to have the proper staff, we're covered from a liability standpoint. In addition, what he's saying about, you know, our long-term having to pay their health care and their and retirement, becomes very costly, costly for those employees.
You know, also, Joe, one of the.
I understand that, I just look at having two grade six operators on site all the time during the course of an eight-hour day. And I look at some others, but I think are significant cost savings, just something I'm just throwing out there, as I did notice, and without getting into the other towns that we that are close by. That do operate their treatment plants in-house, and I don't know if we've taken a look at that.
One of the questions I would have, Joe, and again, I I've never seen an in-house operation in the years that I've been doing this, but one of the concerns that I would have. Is that DEP changes regulations a lot, processes a lot, and these larger companies, they handle it a lot better than smaller people are, you know, like town employees might. Because they see it all throughout their system, you know, all the different plants they run, so I think that they would have more knowledge as it relates to the environmental issues that DEP deals with, that's just my guess. Heather, you you agree?
Yeah, and and I will say that I was not here when it was looked at, but I know it was looked at at a higher level by my predecessor. And what he came out with is that really there was no savings. By the time you you weighed out, because a lot of this cost that they cover, the chemical costs and those different things, and by the time you brought in all of that. Yes, you might realize a little bit of savings at some point, but you have a lot less of, you know, the company. There is still that liability of that potential up and down cost that you would know.
With the vehicles that we supply them, do we, do you also use those to plow with?
Their vehicles we don't plow with, just because they come in and plow with their own vehicles, not all their vehicles have plows, one of, two of them have plows. So they are responsible for plowing their own facility, and we do plow some of it, because when we come in, we use their facility, but. Cleaning up their own yards and their own pump stations.
We do have the right to borrow those vehicles if we want to with notice, we can ask them if we can use them, and and they generally kept.
And we do actually use their their loader.
You said they have a skid steer, they have a loader, they have two trucks with plows.
Yeah, we do use a skid steer, we do use our loader for clearing when we go out and do parking lots and things of that nature if we need it, as having an additional loader. We could use their plows, they're not gonna let me use their guys, not like I have to deal with the water department, it's not quite the same relationship, plus their guys have to. They're they're not going to.
I understand that, but if one of our piece of equipment breaks down.
We we always have the right to go when we need it, yes, we do have to provide them with equipment to do plowing, just like we do with the water department, when they need to go out and clean their yards, they go do it. You know, and even if they're plowing for me, they go do it, so, because they need to keep access to those facilities. So, yes, we could if we really got in an emergency bind and we had too many trucks now and we need a truck, absolutely, especially at nighttime, absolutely.
Are there licenses posted, or do you keep track of who's down there and who's licensed on site?
Well.
Do they report that to the town?
I've known, they've had the same head operator there for twenty years, so. His license hasn't expired. He he lets us know, and you'll see in the in the weekly reports every once in a while, when somebody gets a new license or gets it promoted, he does let us know. So we we're kept informed, and if we ever wanted to, they would tell us immediately, so. One of the issues down there and the reason that provision that we talked about, it has been staffing, staffing is very difficult at wastewater treatment plants and water, and it's only gonna get worse, and I I don't mean to say that lightly, but they're. The people that are in that field have one of the highest age groups, so they're approaching retirement rapidly, the majority of people that hold licenses. So they're, they see a big staffing need, industry-wide, both in water and wastewater, DP has been working on it, they're all trying to set up new programs to get new people in, because it's just not a field that people are aware of that they can go in. It can be very profitable, but you you have to have lots of special skills of being very technical, but also liking to do things with your hands and being hands-on.
Not really the best working environment, as you can imagine.
We talked about being fined, have we ever been, has the town ever been fined?
Not since I was here.
They did it anyway, had to be responsible, but but in the four years I've been here, we've never had a fine, no. We've been there longer than me, in terms of you went to.
We've been very fortunate also that although we've had what we call reportable overflows, it hasn't been from the main plant, whenever there's a sewer main break, it's reported as an overflow. But as a plant, even with the high-flow situations they had, you know, or where there was flooding down in that area, they didn't have a true overflow of their plant. They've always been able to handle the capacity of the flow going through. That is still a possibility, depending on how much, we definitely have a big I and I problem where I know that, but we haven't overtoff anything, which is a big thing in in wastewater treatment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anybody else? Councilor Mackay?
Just following up on what Joe said, couldn't you save money on things like chemicals?
No.
But, but that's not a very good answer, I mean, I've read, let me finish, I've read where communities have taken a look at things like chemicals, ordering chemicals, and they, what they have found. I'm not trying to throw a monkey wrench in this, I I think this is a fine, you did a fine job, what they have found is a lot of these private companies, they're ordering companies from their own supply companies. So they're not only making money from us, they're making money on ordering chemicals.
They, I. A company this size has the ability to go out and bulk purchase chemicals from multiple plants in multiple areas, so you usually get a better rate than we would if we went out and asked for the chemicals that we just were supplied. So they have the ability to say, I have ten plants in this area that I want a price for, and they get a better price than what we have, than what we could get. And that's because they have that buying capacity, so they use their buying capacity, and and Viola does use their national buying capacity, and I have seen it, because their prices that they can get from like Blue Book are better than the prices I can get from Blue Book. And they pass that benefit on to us, they do, I've seen it, because I've seen the prices, I can look at Blue Book and look at the price, and then I look at the Blue Book price that they actually give me on their invoice, and I see the difference.
But there's no competitive bidding, it's just.
But it's their buying capacity.
You could check the statewide bid list if they had any of that product, right, and compare, so you could you could look into it and see if it's available on our statewide bid list, because those are bid for competitive pricing and available for municipalities. If it's a competitive number to what Viola would charge as part of their costs, then we could tell them we're gonna get that chlorine or whatever, if you wanted to.
With this contract.
If, yeah, but I think, Viola's so big, I do think they have a buying power, but I don't know what the answer would be, but you could look at it and see if you could drive down their operating costs for supplies.
The only other thing is, can you do something about the smell?
Can't say that, no, you're not, not, not cheaply, you wanna spend a ton of money, yeah.
I was gonna say, that's an expensive solution.
And they, just so you know, and I'll just make a brief comment about that, the smell is, is it comes into the facility, not so much through the process, it's the actual, when it first comes in, that's where the worst of the smell is, and. If you have a chance, she's taking us all on tours of that facility, it's it's interesting to go see in Iowa. Okay, Steve, we set up a few, but just work with Heather and a couple of you guys wanna go, we're more than happy to have you take a door. It's actually very interesting to watch, and the good thing about it now is you can see some of the improvements that have been done with the capital program programs we did, so she can show you what what it was like, or tell you what it was like, and show you what the improvements are.
I don't know, just, the only thing I wanna say as far as training goes, the closest place you can go is Loam, this is why we need some training facilities around here.
Yeah, I'd be able to partner with Quinn Siegertown and try to get a program and have him work right to the, you know, something like that, that'd be good. And I do know, I think I saw a program that came out where they were trying to promote.
DP, we actually had in the water, but they're gonna do the same thing in the sewer, we actually were able to get a co-op that DP paid for. From Bay Path, I have a plumbing student to come and work with our water guys to open up their eyes to see. You know, there's a different industry that you could pick, you know, plumbing is lucrative, don't get me wrong, but if you wanna do something different, there is this, which your skills as a plumber directly translate into. So it was, it's good, they're trying, Viola has their own programs, they talked about it in here, they're all trying to bring new people into the field, because they all. You know, whether it's Whitewater, Viola, DEP, they're all saying there's gonna be a tremendous shortage in the next ten years.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just one question, you, there was an old contract that we had in our packets and the new one, was there a major difference, or was it just a?
I'll give you a couple, and I'm sure you're gonna miss it, there are a couple of little minor changes, one was the insurance that went up, so that's one, they had the word. In the original one, the negligence issue was worded slightly different, but we ended up taking their wording, so I don't know if that even changed, they, so that's.
The identification clause was pretty much.
What else did we change? It really was very much insurance? Does that change in insurance section and in the appendix? We kept the negligence clause the way it was. Oh, Heather, you remember anything else? I'm trying to think if there's.
We added November, first date, the dates, the other dates we added.
There were very tiny changes. No, we went over it, yeah.
It was like a word here, a word there.
Right.
That's all, thank you.
Anybody else?
One more question, Mr. Chairman, through you, thank you, so just for point of clarification, this contract's costing us a million, two, thirty-six, is that accurate?
No.
Every year?
No, that's without, that's what we said before, it is actually going to be a million, three, seventy-three, nine, forty-nine. And so I would like to pass out, because I know we're getting to cost, so I was gonna do this at the time of cost, so this is appropriate, if you wanna take a take copy of this table to give you a reference.
So that's your base point, and then you increase it by the the formula driven your annual fee increase. That would be your first year base point.
So where are the increases for through the?
That's the point of the gen, you remember what's with that formula?
Every year, there's a.
The CPI and stuff we were talking about, that's the formula used for the increase every year. So it's the base point we started at, then you're gonna increase the first year by that formula, the second year it's gonna be on top of that, so it just keeps increasing by whatever the, I wanna say CPI change, but it's it's a little different than that.
So that's there.
So that's why that formula process is in there to give you the annual increases.
So according to this, then we've already budgeted, but we're saving money?
That's where we go with my question.
So basically, last year, the current contract that we've been operating on and extending, the current budget amount was one point two eight, six, seven, two. But not included in that contract were the additional chemicals because of the change of. Because of the phosphorus change, because of the changes of the plant, they were never renegotiated into the contract, so we paid anything additional to the base chemicals. So there was a certain amount of chemicals they were responsible for, and then we paid the difference, so that was budgeted at seventy-five thousand. In addition, we, there had to be a change to the compost amendment, that was budgeted at forty thousand, there is addition testing and evaluation that were above and above the existing. So all of those budgeted items now are included, so there is a projected over-year savings of forty-one thousand. What will need to happen to cover is some of that money will be transferred into the. Correct contract item, now we're gonna have to do a transfer to cover from the other line items. Now, some of those line items, it's it's kind of tricky to say that this year we're gonna save forty-one thousand, because we've already had to spend money out of those based on what the usages are currently for the last five months. So I kinda did some projections over the, this fiscal year, it looks like it's about ten thousand dollars, depending on where things come in, because some of them are still projected costs, I don't have my November. It's already within our budget.
Thank you. So just one provision, is there some unique cost, whether it's a change of scope, but yeah, as it is, yes.
So, any further questions? So can you get a motion to amend and add after treatment plant to to commence on December first, two thousand nineteen? We don't have to put terms, right, because it's within the contract, right?
It's five years from that date, it keeps going by, five-year term, right?
All right, so there's amendment, all those in favor of the amendment? Oppose? So the final motion would be voted ratified by the Viola contract agreement, when towns operate in Viola in North America, Northeast LLC for the operation, maintenance, and management of wastewater treatment plant, commencing on December first, two thousand nineteen. Roll call. What, did you have any further questions?
No, I'll say, thank you.
Roll call.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Catrano?
Yes.
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Councilor Givon?
Yes.
Councilor Marquetti?
Yes.
Councilor Steve?
Yes.
Attorney Madouse, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, sir. Brandon, you're gonna touch base Monday to talk, we talked briefly today, but we're gonna, he's got some, so we'll figure it out.
Thank you.
Thanks, Heather. And you're gonna make those couple of little minor changes, we'll take it back to that, okay?
Next item. This was, Steve's had some questions, and we usually do this, it's the review of the audit report for fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. We're gonna have Karen Kiney, our finance director, present for this.
Just a comment, every every year we have an audit report, so we have a company coming that does it, and, you know, the report comes into Karen, and we all, we talk about whatever's in that management letter. The management letter describes the the good and bad things that are going on, we review that management letter, and then if there's anything negative in the management letter, we take and and respond and and deal with those negative issues, and that's gonna throw that.
And that's generally pretty good.
Yeah, we're in really good shape.
I left my, I left my audit at home.
No, would you like to use mine? Do you remember any of your questions?
Unfortunately, I read it like a week ago.
I guess you can go to the management line, but just for a quick question, is this the last year of Melanson Heath, right, we have a new audit firm?
Yes, Roselli Clark, we had them before Melanson Heath.
Okay, so this is the last.
And they'll be doing, yes, this is the last one with them, fiscal year eighteen, and they're coming in in a couple weeks to do the FY nineteen audit.
Okay.
Just something, what comment about that, that, I I like that, and I'll tell you why, some some towns use the same auditing firm for many, many years, I like having that change, because it's a fresh set of eyes, and they. When you get standard like that, you see it the same way all the time, you miss things, so I like the change, because they they look at it from a totally different perspective, and they may find things that other auditing firms don't, so I think it's a good thing to be, every once in a while, you switch firms, I think this is good.
Okay, so you wanna review the audit letter, I guess, that, so, or you wanna just ask questions?
No, 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 I just didn't know if anyone wanted an overview of the of the auditors financials, just.
Are we in good shape?
We are in very good shape. We have an unqualified opinion, obviously, for fiscal year eighteen. Does everybody have, or can they look on with someone, or look if we just kinda go over quickly? All right, so that's, yeah, that's just where I wanted to start first, on the, in the beginning with the opinions and the auditor's letter. That everything is presented failing in all material respects. The annual financial statements, the big one. Yep, so we have an unqualified opinion on page two. And then after that, they go into management's discussion analysis, which is just some of the things that they wanna point out, some of the highlights, so you can see on like page six, I just pointed out under the financial headlights, usually we concentrate on the governmental funds. And as I said, at the close of the fiscal year, the fund balances were twenty-two point three million, which was a change of a million, six, eighty-six, okay? What I referenced there is if you go to page eight. Under the financial analysis, it shows you what makes up that million, six, eighty-six, so I just wanted to point out. The general fund revenues and transfers in excess of transfers, expenses and transfers out, then they have the library major fund activity, then the landfill, we still had money come in from the landfill at that point. And then non-major fund activities, which is pretty much everything else, the grants and the capital projects, so that's what's making up there the the increase of a million, six, eighty-six. And then I have a reference, if you go from here to page nine, which is just the next page. A little ways down, it says the total fund balance of the general fund changed by the negative million, six, fifty-five, and then they give a little summary here. So we had excess state, state and local revenues that came in over budget, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, we have expenditures that were less than budget, eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand, excess tax collections over budget, four ninety-three. And then there's the change in the the prior year encumbrances versus the current year encumbrances. So the school had a lot of encumbrances in the prior year. That was, that was their really bad year, that they had, that they had a hard time closing out the book, so they had to carry over a lot of their money, and they paid most of that out, so that's why it looks like there's a big drop there. And then the next one, oh, sure.
That was the first year that the current receiver took over.
I believe, yeah, I believe so, yeah, and then next, with the use of free cash and overlay surplus, and the reason why this looks big there is that we had a lot of free cash in the year before, we had two point six million. And we did similar to what we do now, is we voted towards the end of the fiscal year for use in the following year, so that's what that change was, it was a big fund balance reserve for expenditure. That, and then when we used it the next year, that's the reduction that was happening there, so it was just the the use of the free cash.
Wasn't that the, wasn't that the last year that we kind of put a lot of free cash into our actual budget, as opposed to?
That we used.
We were doing that for for a while, we were doing a fair amount of free cash in the budget, we haven't been doing that a lot lately.
I think maybe, yeah, I think maybe seventeen, the year before this was the last year that we we were using some of the free cash for operations. And then we have the change in stabilization went up a hundred and one, and then there's a small negative other, so that's what caused the reductions, even though it looks like, okay, oh my god, the fund balances went down one point six million, it was really because we were carrying that the the free cash to use it for the next year. And then down below there, instead of going back, just down below, we can see again that that's what's a change in the stabilization, again, these are a little bit older, so it goes from seventeen to eighteen, there was a hundred and one thousand, that was. That was added to the fund, we actually added a hundred and twenty-five thousand, but the, there was a negative amount of interest for that year, so we actually lost a little bit of money in there. So just to give you an idea, I wrote down here, the.
So let me ask you, so a stabilization account is an interest-bearing account?
Yes, yeah, we have it in the trust funds, yep, earning interest.
Is there someplace else we could put it that would still be interest-bearing, but not like stock market?
Well, we could talk to the, to be a little bit more conservative maybe in there, that was a bad year, yeah, that was a bad year, but.
Losing money from a stabilization.
Right, I mean, I could talk to the treasurer about it and see.
So who makes those decisions on where trust fund balances?
The treasurer would.
That's a sole decision, as far as a management decision?
But I, usually, my experience is that treasurers do, but based upon the financial advisor, it's not just the treasurer making decisions, they have a financial advisor that's. Tells how to make those investments, and they look at the long-term return on the investment, not short-term, so when they're marking like an annuity for like a pension or anything else, they don't look at it one year, what happens in a given year, they they, just like your 401K, it's stretched out over a period of time. And that's all done by the financial advisors, now, those type of funds are very conservative, because they have the need, you know, they're not risky with towns' money, so it's a very conservative investment investment mix is what they do. But it's not, it's the treasurer, because he has the authority, but it's really the financial advisor that tells the treasurer what to do.
How often do you get those, those reports?
Quarterly.
And those are reports that you can send out to us on a quarterly basis?
On the, on here, I think so.
Well, I think, if we look at that management report letter that was done by, that we got.
I remember getting one of those, yeah, a while back.
So you forwarded to us about the fiscal management of the town, and it was.
That's the Booty's report, though, you're talking about the.
The Booty Barn report, yeah.
That's not, I don't think that's what you're asking for.
Well, no, no, but the Booty Barn report that, what reported out, said that the town manager sends out to us on a regular basis. Within that report, it was. Within that report, it was reported to them that we get all these reports.
Expense reports, and there was, you're right, I think there was a revenue, financial reports about investments. I think that was it.
Yeah, investment accounts.
So that would be, we can ask Melissa, she, I'm sure she gets some kind of quarterly report from the investments. We'll ask her and see if we can forward it to her.
But it was just part of that Moody's report that said that...
Right, that the council was notifying, yes.
That we get all these reports and we don't see those reports.
That was a surprise to me.
I remember, I remember seeing that because I remember hearing a whole bunch of different investments.
You did get the quarterly expense reports.
You just talked about how well each of them were doing, yeah.
You do get the quarterly expense reports, and they say we give you monthly, which we don't. We give them to you on a quarterly basis. But they also did talk about the revenues and the, the revenue side of the house, the investments, and you don't get that. And frankly, I don't even remember seeing it for me.
We did see one. I remember, I remember you were, like you and I think Mindy were sitting over there when you were talking about it, right?
No, no, and just to give you an idea, as of June 30th of 19, the balance in the stabilization is 3.5 million. So we put in, so that rebounded well in that year. I think that was, we put in 2...
240.
240, yeah. It's a big for them.
That was a debate.
There was another.
Yeah, okay.
I think though, we still got close.
So let me just go back and see if there was anything else. I mean, that pretty much, that pretty much covers it in the, in this section. Then I just wanted to point out on page 10, our credit rating, that the town maintained a standard and poor's credit rating of a double A minus, which is a credit, which is an, it was an increase to our credit rating. It was a couple of years ago. Mindy and I kind of fought pretty hard to see if we could get an upgrade, and we actually did. I believe before it was an A plus, and then it go, even though it seems like a double A minus is probably less, it's actually a better rating that we have. So, so, so basically, we're, we're doing the right things to stay safe, stable. It's really hard with our economics to keep pushing us higher. We keep trying to do the best we can. It's a, it's a tough, it's a tough road. I don't know if anybody has any other questions about this before we just go quickly into some of the statements. I just want to point out a couple of statements. On page 12 is the statement of net position. And basically, that's an accrual statement, different than what you normally see from us, which is going to include the, the capital assets, the land, CIP, and then others, net of depreciation. The machinery that's up at the top under the non-current assets. Then you're going to see under the non-current liabilities, you see your bonds payable. You're going to see your net pension liability, which is 26 million. And you're going to see your net OPEB liability, which is 43.7 million. So that's a lot of reason why we, we keep hammering away at the OPEB, because you can see the liability is actually very high.
How, how is that calculated? Because I remember somewhere else in the document, that was actually the only thing that was in right up there. As I saw, it like changed over the course of a year by like 10 million bucks.
Yeah, there's actually a report that we have done every couple of years. We have an actuary do it.
And went down by 10 million bucks.
Yes.
Which is good, but...
The liability goes down at the stock market, and the investment mix goes up. So it depends what the investment mix does, I would think. Just like your, your pension fund. If you have a great year in the stock market, and that's where you have good investments, then it increases. But next year, it goes down. So it goes, I believe, with the financial investments.
Yeah, but if your liability, that's your liability.
Right.
Not your income fund. Your liability went down. He's saying the liability went down.
Yeah, but that's because the investments they have in, they have a fund, right? It's existing that goes up and down too, right?
Well, we only, we only have like a million, I think we had a million and one in there.
Yeah, that's right, because you only have a small trust.
But what it also is, is the tweaks and the changes that we make to our health insurance plans too.
Right.
You know?
But the 50%, I know that Kevin raised it, right? So, but that cost went up, but the, they did not raise the cost for retirees because they're flat at 50, right?
They're 50/50.
So they didn't see any savings there because that never changed. So I don't know why it would change by the number Gus is implying. It's not the best, besides it's not the expense side, I don't know why it would change.
But I think it also depends on our experience too, and how we're doing, if there's a lot of claims. You know, how high all of that is too, you know, that pushes up the cost of some of it too.
Well, you have to look too. I mean, a mix of teachers have gone from teachers that are well-experienced, long-term teachers, to relatively inexpensive teachers. So your liability is going to be less.
To younger people.
Right, and, and plus, we have that other plan that we, that we brought in, the HMO who select.
Right.
And that, that's a little bit less expensive, expensive plan too. So that's why we do get it updated often because that the liability does fluctuate. I almost want to say maybe it was, it was 60 million several years back too. You know, so we've done a decent job in trying to control it, but it's such a large number. You know, and you were asking, okay, well, you know, what are some of the things, why do we need to contribute to the OPEB too? And obviously, it's, it's, you know, as we put money away now, you know, it's, it's cheaper to use these dollars than it is later on. And it's a big budget buster too, the health insurance. We keep doing a pay-as-you-go, and you don't put anything aside. Maybe it's some, it just becomes so expensive to the budget too.
When was the last time you did the actual study on that, do you remember? Because they probably, you'd be able to look at the study and find out the answer to the question.
Yeah, I could, yeah, I mean, I could always send it, send it to anybody too.
You'd have to look at that study to find out what the answer to that question was, Gus.
Because I don't want to show myself, as I understand it, some of that liability calculation is calculated based on, like, projected, projected income from investments and things like that, that are, that are, as I understand it, are numbers that are almost pulled out of the air in some cases, it looks like. And as compared to what we actually see in terms of what we're getting from some of these investments, which is what the projections are based on percentage-wise.
And what they also try to do is they, they look at our workforce, and they try to project out, okay, what percentage is going to stay? At what age are they going to retire? And they try to do all of that too. So there's all kinds of, you know, calculations that go into all of that. But if you'd like, I can, you know, send the council the last report. It was just done for, for this, for the audit for 18, I believe.
That's right.
Yeah, so I can do that too. And, you know, it's, it's well over my head, I'll tell you. It's very complicated, but that's okay.
I understand the pension side, but I don't do that.
You can pull a few things out of there, you know? So basically, just to point out, and here, the total net position, and this is the one with the accrual. And you'll see the large unrestricted, the 64 million, and what's driving that, obviously, is the pension, the OPEB liability. But we're still in a positive 20 million 686 because of the fact that we have our fixed assets in here too. Okay? And then the, the statements that we mostly pay attention to are in the governmental, which is very similar on page 14. So the, this is pretty much...
Can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
If I could go back to page 13.
Yep.
Where it says expenses. Was it, our expenses for education were almost $50 million last year? 49, 698?
I think in the charter school.
Well, I get that, but I mean, BPATH and everything, right?
But I think what also is in here too, is I think they add in the, the MTRS too. There's a, there's a contribution for that.
So that would be all within the education market?
Yeah, because, because if you, yeah, if you go forward and you look at it, you're not going to see anything.
Yeah, I just want to see.
I know, you're not going to see anything close to that.
Okay.
That 33.6 million would include state aid and...
Right, no, there's no doubt, I just, but, alright. We can figure that out later, but I just thought that was a tie.
Okay.
Alright, so page 14?
Okay, so just on page 14, now you can see here, the total fund balances on the, on the governmental funds, without all the accruals, come to the 22. It's total fund balances right across total governmental, 22.3 million. And then on the next page, it actually shows you a reconciliation of how you get from the total governmental to the accrual with the net positions. You can see with the, with the, there's $99 million worth of capital assets, and then you have that negative 103 million with your long-term liabilities, which is your pension and your OPEB. So that's a reconciliation of how you get just from one statement to the other. But the governmental, you know, what's important to point out is the governmental fund statement is, is pretty much here is what we use to certify our free cash, and I check these numbers out very well. Then you just have some statements after that. You have your statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in your fund balance. That's just where they break it down between, you know, the different categories. I don't know if anybody has any questions about that. But you can see here, the education is the 31.5, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
0.5 million. And then they break it out between the general, and they do pull some major funds. So the library is a major fund because of the, the Edwards trusts. We have those on our books. We've had them on our books for many years. And that's sometimes where you can see the fluctuation of how the markets are doing too. Sometimes they're, these funds earn good, and sometimes they lose a lot of money too. There's a lot in there. Now, we still have our landfill royalty.
How much control do we have over what they're invested in?
They're, I believe they're in the Bank of America is what they're in, and they pretty much have the control over the investments. I think it's written up somewhere that they, we don't have, yeah, we don't have any control. It's just that they're on our books.
On our books.
Yeah.
Is there any way we can get more control over, more public and control over the way our funds are invested?
Our funds or the trust funds that are there?
Well, it, well, but the trust funds, I mean, if that's, if that's on our books, I would consider it to be a, a public fund. But the various, the various trusts, the various funds that we, that we have, that we're investing in. Is there any way we can get to have more control over how, where they're invested? Where, whether we're doing business with places like Bank of America versus credit unions or things like that?
Again, I haven't read that trust, but my general thought would be, it depends upon how the trust is created and what the, the originators of the trust, usually the family that has the money with their attorneys will develop the trust and they'll set up terms and stuff to it. I don't know what those terms are, but I suspect it, you know, they have somebody investing the money in some process, and how much they give the town as a percentage of what they have. But that, that's all set by whoever developed the trust. And I don't know if, at the end, they may, I don't know if they give that trust power to a trust board. They usually have like a trust advisory board who oversees and can make changes to that. But we don't deal with any of that because it's out of our control. It's really the trust itself that runs that, so. I don't know why, I don't, I'm not sure why it's on the town books because it's a donation. But actually, somehow, the trust is, is under the town's name because it's a gift to the town, right? But that's why it's in books. I'm not really sure why it's in the books. I imagine it's got to be a gift to the town in some way, but it's still under control of the way the trust is set up.
Yeah, there, several years back, I must say.
I'm not, you know, I'm not expert, but I think that's...
After I got here, or around that time, that there was a, some type of a struggle between the town and the library trustees to bring those on the books.
Yeah.
And it, yeah.
I vaguely remember that.
Yeah, and, and they're here. We don't, we just make sure that we record everything properly, we don't do anything else with them, but...
You have to know how the trust is set up.
You're going to enjoy this stuff. This is great stuff. We're getting there, I promise.
Yeah, I was thinking not just just that particular trust, but just our investments in general.
Yeah, I mean, Melissa, as, as the treasurer has advisors that we use, we use them for when we borrow. We also use them for investments. I think we have a lot of these too in Betholomy or whatever, so. But there's a lot of great schedules after, after this too, that talk about all the budgets. And then we, we just, just look quickly on pages like 19 and 20, give you some information on the water and sewer funds, which are considered the business type, the proprietary funds. Again, everything's pretty good there too. And then there's a lot of pages, starting on page 24 goes into all the notes of the financials. So there's some, you know, there's some interesting information in here too, if you wanted to look through, about the OPEB and the pension and all that too. There's some capital assets, more of the, the breakouts on those too. Anything else that anyone might have for questions on the audit itself? Then we can just, sure.
My only question is, does this say that water and sewer has a asset of 44 million? Is that what that's 44.3 million? Is that sitting there?
What page do you want? 19, right here.
It's got to be the capital assets.
Is that what that means?
Oh, yeah, yep. Land and the CIP, and then the other capital assets, absolutely, yeah.
Facilities, equipment, everything is in that, all assets.
The land and all of that, yep, their facilities, and all of their equipment.
It's not money.
Yeah, all, all together, yeah.
That's at the top, isn't it?
Sure, yeah.
The very first line on that, on page 19.
Yep.
Is that what's sitting in your budget for expenses for projects?
Enterprise one, three.
Where are you?
Under assets, current assets, the first line, cash and short-term investments.
What page do you want?
19.
Page 19.
Well, that's going to be the cash we would have.
Alright, and that's available for projects and sewer.
Well, it's really, yeah, it's more the retained earnings underneath where it says the unrestricted, that's what's available. The 4.1 million down the bottom for water and the 3.9 million. That would be, it would be there.
Yeah, I don't have a lot, but that's usually the retained earnings, except for the projects that we have to do, water line, things like that.
It, the retained earnings is typically, is like a stabilization account for us that we could use. And sometimes we use money for capital projects or things that come up that we have to take from retained earnings. But that, that, that is usually after a lot of the capital projects are done too. That's sort of like your, like I say, your stabilization account.
Okay, so that's just a quick overview of the financials. And I'd just like to quickly go through, we have a management letter and a side letter. There's just a few minor things in here. Does everyone have a copy? Do you have a copy of, I, I call it the side letter. It's dated March 27th, and it's to myself and to Ron.
Right, yeah.
Okay. And it just, it says as a course of the, of the audit, they identify certain areas where they think that we have some efficiencies that we can approve on, but they're not significant enough that they put it in the management letter. But I wanted to share that, and I have some responses from management on it too. So under the account, it says to formalize an internal audit process over the departmental receipts at the department level. So what I put there is that the miscellaneous receipts just went live on our new system, UNIS, on November 1st. So once we become, we've become more familiar with the process, we get things up to date, then Yolanda and I are going to put together some processes, and we're going to do some, you know, random, go in there at random times or whatever and do some internal audits. It's absolutely a very good idea. We just need to formalize our procedures and go forward with that.
Talk about it for a long time.
Yeah, I know, that's been, that's been listed there for a while, and just haven't been able to get to it, but we do want to. And then the next one says, consider recording the ambulance receivable and the general ledger. So these are the receivables for the billing for our ambulance services. And Melissa and I discussed that, and we're going to start recording that, the activity on the general ledger by the end of fiscal 2020. So we had it then, at this point, they would just put it on for the audit. But she's familiar with doing that in other places where she's been, so we're going to put the activity on there.
So that'll be this year, the end of this fiscal year.
Right, so the end of this fiscal year that we're in now for 2020. So for the treasurer, follow up on the liquid outstanding checks, at least annually, void and, and transfer to the attailing's account. Let's see. It says we'll plan, the tailings notices, plan to, we'll plan to tailings notice and transfer as soon as the UNIS cash reconciliation conversion is complete. And then they're going to implement, he's going to implement an annual tailing notice routine each fall. So we're going to do an annual in the fall, once we get everything caught up to date with the conversion, everything. And then it says, make all trust fund transfers in a timely manner. So the practice is to do it at least quarterly. We're continuing the practice. She says, we're aware that some transfers may lag while we're completing the UNIS conversion, and until we're in the one system. But that, that's the procedure that I had, you know, before Melissa was here, and we're going to continue to do them quarterly. Okay, the school department. Monitor the balance in the school lunch, so it doesn't exceed the federal maximum three months. Their balance is kind of, was kind of high, that's why the, it was made. And that they're going to continue to monitor, let's see, continue to monitor the balance, which is supported with a new financial system, UNIS, so it was implemented July 1. Several years ago, the new, they had a new, new food service director, and she identified that there, there were large cash fund balances. And she's been trying to spend down the balances to an appropriate level by doing equipment upgrades, facility upgrades, purchasing food and materials in a financially prudent manner. And I do not see that they're, they're not frivolously trying to spend it or anything, you know?
No, they put the outdoor refrigerators walking, freezes, I think, at the...
Yeah, and see, unfortunately, they had troubles with the contractor that had the concrete pads on it.
The concrete pads, but that was one of the things they do, so it could be more school-based.
I remember that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Do you know what their balances are now, or is that within the report? You can send that to us offline, that's fine.
Okay, alright, yeah. Okay, alright, yeah. Okay. It says, establish documented policy for calculating payouts for term, for terminated employees and maintain the documentation to ensure compliance. Okay, so what they say on that is that Human Resources calculates the amount owed and the accrued time. They use a calculation sheet to run the calculation and then they're gonna have it reviewed by the business office. And then once a check confirms the amount to be paid, the final check is run. And a copy of the calculation is be, gonna be, become part of the payroll warrant included in the employee's file. So it just wasn't all there, you know, before. Usually they would give us some type of a spreadsheet, but evidently when they were testing, they found maybe there were some things that weren't readily available for review.
And they have a new Human Resources director over there, so they're gonna be able to bring. Better control of them.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
Yeah, and then ensure that their student activities are audited on an annual basis to comply with the DESI guidelines. And they have an, an audit of the two thousand eighteen student activity fund scheduled for January of twenty twenty coming up. So it is, it is behind.
I know they've been working on that though, because they've had some problems and I know they were trying to fix that, so.
And it says, after this audit, the Southbridge treasurer goes to review when future audits will be scheduled. So we're gonna have to work out something with them because if they don't have a formal audit every, every year, they either myself and or the business manager, we're supposed to be doing something to look at their balances in there. And then we just have a thing. Okay, this was a five, right off delinquent, ambulance receivables, if they're over eighteen months, they're supposed to be written off in June. And the, the fire chief said that they were written off in May of this year according to the, to the schedule.
Roughly how much do we lose in this eighteen month, eighteen month period?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Roughly how much do we, are we losing as far as stuff that we just can't collect?
I don't know what the dollars are. I know it's significant because it's a very poor community, right? So when they go out, there's a lot of people can't pay, so they write off a lot, Gus, but the exact number I don't know. But it's, it's a lot more significant in this town than it would be in a lot of other areas, just so you know.
Yeah, and our collections are a little bit under, I think, a million dollars right now for last fiscal year, you know, so we're still, we're still doing well. It's a little bit lower than what it was before. We have raised the rates a couple of times over the last few years.
Staffing too, because they were so short-staffed, they couldn't respond to a lot of stuff over that fiscal year. They lost a lot of calls, Ron, I mean, they, they lose a lot of calls.
I'm saying you're, I'm not, you're accurate, I'm just wondering.
I'm not sure how much it would increase, but there is a correlation between the number of people that you have available to respond, that you lose a call to another.
Me and chief are having a, a big debate over the transfer issue too and how much we should be doing and all that. So we, next year, this year's budget, we may come to you and, and decrease that amount. I've gotta get the chief to figure out what the appropriate transfer call should be and what the revenue we're willing to give up. So that, it's a very interesting discussion we're gonna have and I'm not sure what you're gonna get next year, not yet, Jack.
Yeah.
But I, I want you to know we are debating that subject.
Okay, and then the last item on this letter was to improve the segregation of duties related to police detail. Now, right now, the police department does the billing and they take in the cash receipts, so that's why they're asking for some segregation duties. So the treasurer and I did talk about this the other day. What we're thinking is maybe bringing the collections into the collector's office. We're also thinking about doing the billings through UNIS at some point. Where maybe they, the police can still do their billings through their IMC. I know that they like their systems or whatever. Maybe we can have an, an import file into UNIS and then we can do the collections here. So that's what their main thing is, we need to have separations of duties, just to make sure everything, not, not one person does the whole, the whole thing there. So we will be working on something to take care of that too. Okay, so just, go ahead.
Given the fact that this is the two thousand eighteen audit, the majority of these things.
That's correct.
We're gonna have a new audit.
Yes.
A lot of these should be on the same audit.
Yes, yes, that's what's gonna happen.
With a new auditor.
That's correct.
And they look at this letter, so I'm assuming they're gonna make sure that this stuff.
Yeah, they don't normally do the side letter, so I don't know.
No, no, but they're gonna look at the materials from last year's audit.
Absolutely.
And they're gonna see that that was already there.
They've already looked at the management letter.
Address those issues with them when they come to you, before they write the management, they're gonna talk to you about those items, you're gonna show them how to address them, right? So they won't show up on the audit.
Well, they may show up in the management letter, but they always give us a chance to do responses. So if you wanna just, we can just take a look at that quickly too. So the management letter for June thirtieth of two thousand eighteen. There's just a few issues here, starting on page three. Document policies and procedures over federal awards, and that's kind of also tied into number two, is prepare for the new single audit guidelines over procurement. So there is some, and I have a, a copy here of an example. We need to do some federal grant policies and procedures. And they gave us a copy and pretty much you can use this and then tailor it to your town. So we're gonna have to do this for, they suggest we do it for the community development block grant. We'll do one for that. Then we'll do, they'll have to have a general one for any federal ones for the, for the town and the school also has to do their own too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, just a question on that, because most of your federal grants are pass-throughs through the state, right? So CDBG is a state pass-through. It still requires you to do it for CDBG, even if they give the money to the state and the state then you apply to the state.
Yeah, you always have to go back to the origin of the funds. Yeah, this is, this is a federal grant. I did start working on it a little while back with, with, when Rose was doing it. But I need to, yeah, I need to get together with PEG and, and then with the school and then us internally, we need to just go through this.
Yeah, I just know that the CDBG grant when it comes has all kinds of policies and procedures with it, so I'm, I'm just a little confused about how these policies and procedures were tailored to the ones that are already set up by CDBG, so I imagine they're gonna be aligned, but.
Yeah, I think we just, I think we have to incorporate it.
They're gonna be aligned.
Yeah.
I would think that they were, they had similar policies and procedures for the school grants as well, but I remember you.
I, we don't deal with that.
Them having some serious discrepancies in their reporting on the school side as far as their.
The Title Ones.
The Title One, yeah.
And then, right here where it says, prepare for GAZBIs, oh, the GAZBs are just great. The General Accounting Standards Board always keeps us on our toes. Eighty-four and eighty-seven are beginning, be coming out for fiscal years twenty and twenty-one. They're about fiduciary activities and, and what's the other one, leases. So we, we work closely with the auditors and a lot, a lot of that, they, they do too, to incorporate into their, into our financial statements that they put together. So that's what, what those two new ones are. And actually, when you, when you brought that up there in this, the last report here is the independent, so this is a single audit. The Independent Auditors Report Pursuant to Governmental Accounting Standards Uniform, Uniform Guidance. That was the one you were referring to, Council of Steve's, where there's some, some issues with the, with the school.
Yeah.
In this one, I can just kind of point that out if you, yeah. So that's another one of those small ones under page ten, I believe, is where it starts.
One more time, so you can change it whenever you want, I bear.
Let's see here. Yep, they talk about us not having the written federal policies, which we need to, which we need to take care of there. And then, let's just see, what am I missing here? It's, I know that it's here somewhere because I was just reading it like you were talking about. Okay, so there were, yes, it talks about the reports for like Title One and Special Ed are due within sixty days of the end of the grant year. And they're saying that they haven't been filed on a, on a timely basis. And I, I know that they're working on trying to address that. They wanna use as much as they can with their grant dollars. They have a lot of grants, they have a lot going on because of the receivership and all of that. They just need to improve the timeliness of their reporting, is what comes out in here. Nothing else for big findings or anything.
Very good.
Yeah.
Alright, any questions?
Thank you. Who wants me to stay?
We'll take a quick three-minute recess.
Three minutes?
People go to bathrooms.
No, that's fine.
If I could.
You can sit over here, my seat.
No, actually, I've got a bad neck.
The turn that way.
Oh, okay.
Camera's still on, just so you know, so no liberation, right?
You might have to back up a little bit just so it's not hitting you, but.
Oh, you're gonna do.
And I apologize for that loud sigh. I don't know what could hold me, I'm so sorry.
I know, it was a sigh of excitement.
It was.
You're trying to contain your excitement over the audit stuff, I know.
Karen and I joke of how those things are more thrilling than mine are.
I like yours better actually. Yours is easy. I can get the gist of them, but.
I'm gonna bring this back down, I'll come.
Yeah. I'm so glad that SOR is over, but now we have a little freaking water, so. Water, we're gonna have to ask for extensions because we're gonna be late. I just, I can't, I just can't keep up doing these larger projects one after another.
Does expire twenty twenty?
Yeah, expires in twenty twenty and we're gonna have to ask for extensions, so our first step now is to get engineering services, just like we do with, with SOR. But they're, they just eat up so much goddamn time because, and, and I'm hoping water won't be as bad as SOR, but it's just. Now you have to, and you have to read these contracts over and over and over. Meetings and adjustments, it's just, it's just a long process. And, you know, on top of the other stuff we do, it just eats up a lot of time. And I just can't seem to get away from this, you know, first we did three-year contracts, now we're doing that, it's just. Now you gotta do cable too, you know, we're gonna try to do as much as we can before we flip. So you got fifteen minutes.
Fifty?
Fifteen.
For me?
Huh? Ten? He's wanting to do the ten, six, six. This one should be easy, but nothing surprises me. What, did you use the one in Italy? That's not, once a year and you rented the rest of that?
That's twice.
You rented the rest of the year? You rented the rest of the year? Oh, so it's, so it's not classing money, somebody's paying, okay, that's good. That's an interesting place to have an investment, kind of far away. The management company's already running it for you?
Yeah.
For retirement something? That's what I'm doing by the breach, that's my retirement one day.
Reconvene at seven forty-three. Well, gender item, that's one more. Tax class creation presentation from Board of directors, Principal Assessor. So first, thank you, Will. I know we talked about this earlier to give us a sense of, before we do the public hearing, because we're gonna hear this all again at the public hearing, which will be for my fellow council's prepared hearing scheduled for December second at six-thirty, just prior to the town council meeting. So, correct?
Correct.
Alright, so, turn it over to Will.
Okay, so, a few things. So about a month ago, the council mentioned they wanted to talk about this stuff in more, in detail so they'd have time to deliberate and consider different things. That was, in my opinion, pretty, it's not premature that they wanted the information, they wanted to do that, but the information wasn't available yet. We have still been in the revaluation process. We, as far as that goes, we received final certification on Friday of last week. And that allowed then the state to go into our total town values and a new growth, which we received approval for that, I believe it was on Monday. So a lot of this stuff kind of hinges on that, other, other, if you wanna talk specifics, we can't do it until we had that stuff done. So before I go into this, do you want the whole presentation, or do you want a very quick version, or do you wanna talk on the items that have to do with classification?
I think maybe a quick version overview of the highlights and then we can talk about the different factors, like we had discussed about what the implications are. Agreeable to everybody?
Okay, so some of these slides I'm gonna go through very quickly.
And again, we're gonna have this again on the public camera too, right? A lot of this information?
I hope Karen has to be there, she'd really enjoy this. So anyway, the Board of Assessors, myself, friend, and we've been, we've been on, we've been a stable board for almost, two of us have been there for thirty years. We're gonna talk about classification, what that really means, what the options available to a town are. All of these just topics which have to do with it, we're gonna go into in detail. So new growth, this is important in that.
Can you go back to, if I want new growth is, just for, no, alright, alright, go ahead. I thought there was more on that.
Yeah, so basically new growth, what is it? It's new, new buildings, new subdivisions, new additions to properties and so forth. It adds value to the town that wasn't there before and new taxes. How does it affect the property taxes? It brings in additional dollars while minimally affecting existing taxpayers. So, for example, you build a new house, there's another three, four thousand dollars in new taxes that wasn't there before, but that doesn't really affect the people who were there the year before. And how does it affect the levy limit? The levy limit controls under Prop two and a half, how much money a town can raise in property taxes each year. And that affects that, it increases it. So on new growth this year, we have a total, let me just digress a second. So I gave the council a detailed memo to go with this last week. It's a very dry memo, this kind of elaborates on a lot of stuff. A memo is a memo, it gives you, gives you the info. So our new growth for the year is, we have thirteen million in dollars every year that goes up a little bit. And all of the values are based on comparable armstrong sales prior years. And that ensures that everybody pays their proportional share of the town, town value and their proportional share of town taxes. Your, whatever your value is on your property compared to the total, that's how much of the town you own. So, revalu, revaluation, re certification, how do we do this? We do a lot of inspections. At the, at the full meeting, I'll go into this, but my, myself and my staff are out there constantly checking houses, checking buildings to make sure we've gotten them correctly. So, in the revaluation, this is important. So, from last year, overall, the single family went up in value about eight point four percent. Condominiums, four point two percent, two and three-family buildings went up about seven point six percent. The apartment buildings, four, over four unit apartment buildings went up about thirteen point two percent. Land didn't really change, so the total residential class in value went eight point eight percent. Total commercial went at six point six and the total industrial went up eight point two percent. Our tax levy, it's determined by everything you vote during the year, it goes to expenditures, plus state and county charges and so forth. It's paid for by state, the revenues of state aid, local receipts, excise tax, enterprise fund and all of that. Whatever is left to be paid is the tax levy. And for Southbridge, our levy is exactly what was presented to you at budget time. You had some various choices, but the one you picked, that's what our tax levy came up to be. So this year, the tax levy is gonna be twenty-one million, nine hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars. So that twenty-one million is the amount of the levy and we've already talked about the taxable value, billion, one hundred twenty-six million. If you do the math, you take the levy and divide it by the town value, that yields a tax rate of nineteen forty-eight per thousand assessed value. Now, this is subject to the Department of Revenue's approval and it might change a little bit, but it should be pretty close.
So just. Just explain the nineteen, how that's calculated for an individual, times every thousand, is what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, so again, the amount of money we're raising in taxes is that twenty-one million, nine thirty-eight. And the total town is valued at a billion, one twenty-six, so, next slide, oh, sorry, I thought it was there. So if you, yeah, so if you divide that twenty-one million by the one billion, twenty-six, it comes out to nineteen forty-eight per thousand dollars worth of value. If your house was valued at a hundred thousand dollars, taxes would be nineteen hundred forty-eight dollars, for illustration. So last year's, this year's levy is twenty-one million, nine thirty-eight. Last year's levy was twenty-one million, one twenty-four. That's an overall increase of, from last year, eight hundred thirteen thousand. That percentage increase is three point eight five percent. If you subtract the new growth, again, that's new stuff that came on the books, the change after new growth is five forty-two, or two point five seven percent. So Proposition Two and a Half establishes a number of things, a levy ceiling, a levy limit, maximum allowable levy, and what is excess levy capacity. So the levy ceiling says that a town, any town's property tax rate can't be, taxes can't be more than two and a half percent of total assessed value. So what that means is, your tax levy, I'm sorry, your tax rate cannot exceed twenty-five dollars per thousand. So for Southbridge, because our value is a hundred, one billion, one twenty-six, two and a half percent of that, we could, as long as we're under that twenty-eight million, one hundred fifty-one, we're under the levy ceiling, under Prop two and a half. Levy limit, maximum allowable levy, what this is, is, this is a calculation based on Proposition Two and a Half, which dictates how much money you can raise in property taxes each year. So to calculate that, you have your two thousand nineteen levy limit, you add two and a half percent to that each year. You add your new growth, that gives you your fiscal year two thousand twenty levy limit. And to that, you can add any debt exclusions that a voter approved and that gives you your maximum allowable tax levy. For Southbridge, last year's levy limit was twenty-one million, six, two and a half percent of that is five forty, and broke, which was two hundred seventy thousand. So our new levy limit this year is twenty-two million, four thirteen. The Bay Path debt exclusion for this year is two hundred seventeen thousand. The Bay Path debt exclusion for this year is two hundred seventeen thousand. So, that means the town could raise up to twenty-two million six hundred and thirty thousand, and still be under our levy limit, not need a Prop 2.5 override for anything that we would, might contemplate. So, you see the maximum allowable levy, our actual tax levy is less than that, of twenty-one million nine thirty-eight. So, that means we have the capacity to raise another six hundred ninety-two thousand dollars this year in property taxes. We're not doing it, but it is available. And next year, at six ninety-two, we'll be added to it by present next year.
Can I make a just comment here? Because this is where citizens are the most confused. When they think of Proposition 2.5, they think that means that this year's taxes, the most that can go up is by two and a half percent for their tax rate. It has nothing to do with that, but that's what citizens think with Proposition 2.5. It's very confusing. It's more about levy limit than it is about an individual tax rate. Just so you understand that, because it's very, very confusing to citizens. They have no clue how this works.
Okay, so, under Prop 2.5, you have several options of things you can do to shift the tax levy, the tax burden, one of which is a residential exemption. So, this is a quick summary. It allows you to discount, up to a twenty, thirty-five percent discount of average residential value to owner-occupied residential properties. To do that, though, the tax rate increases for all residential property. So, if we had a single tax rate, we already talked about calculating out to nineteen forty-eight. If we had a residential exemption, the residential tax rate would increase, it wouldn't be nineteen forty-eight, because you're exempting residential value. The residential tax rate will increase to whatever proportion that we exempted in value from owner-occupied properties. We'll get into that a little more if you'd like to. It shifts, the residential exemption shifts the burden from lower-valued homes to vacant land, higher-priced home and non-residential homes. All vacant residential land is taxed at the higher rate. This works in communities with a large amount of vacation homes or non-owner-occupied properties, big apartment buildings, to shift the burden onto.
I have to look at the Cape. The Cape doesn't let it out.
A lot of the cities do it here.
Yes, it is, well. Board of Assessors strongly recommends the adoption of this exemption. I can get into that more later if you'd like, but that's our recommendation on this. These are the cities and towns that adopted it last year, to the best of my knowledge. So, as you can see, there are Cape Town, Boston, Brooklyn, Cambridge, Chelsea, Concord. Resident, those are places where a lot of people commute to the city with, into some large, large buildings and so forth. This gives you an idea of the type of communities that have adopted it. I can't see one of those that's even minutely similar to Southbridge. So, then, we have another option. So, that's keeping a single tax rate, but having the residential exemption inside of the residential class. You can also, the Mass General Law allows you to shift the tax rate from the residential class to the commercial, industrial, personal property class. So, to do that, the law requires us to come up with a minimum residential factor, I'll explain that in a second. It allows a maximum shift of fifty percent to the CIP classes. To do that, based on the proportion of residential to commercial, minimum residential factor would be point eight six, one seven. That means the residential, we talked about a factor of one, that factor could not be less than point eight six. And it's based on, it's based on the percentage of residents, the commercial. A factor of one, each class would have tax at the same rate, and we'll give some examples of shifts of various classes. So, let's see, on the bottom part, we call, examples of the tax shift. If we were to shift the maximum amount on, to the residential, the commercial, the highlighted part along the very bottom is, with the single tax rate, the average single-family property tax bill this year is gonna be thirty-nine twenty-five. Average commercial is gonna be ten thousand seven thirty-three, and average industrial on the right, eleven thousand three eighteen. So, above that, I have five various examples of the shift. If you go up five lines to fifty percent, the maximum shift allowed, the average residential would drop to thirty-three eighty-three, which is a difference of, I don't know, six hundred dollars approximately. But that means, then you go to the middle column, the average commercial, their average tax bill would go from ten thousand seven thirty-three to sixteen thousand one, which is about five thousand dollars approximately. And the average industrial, approximately the same thing. Now, you could, we could shift anywhere in the middle, I'm just using that for illustration. So, Board of Assessors, we, it's our recommendation, factor one, a single tax rate, but... So, I'm gonna go to the next one. If you want to see this anymore, feel free, but I'm gonna go to the next one. I'm gonna skip by this. I made this slide because upstairs, it's, you can't see that first one, so I'm just gonna skip over that. So, this was in your packet, this chart right here, and it shows the average change on average condo, average one-family, average two-family, vacant land, apartment buildings, commercial and industrial. And I want to point out the commercial, okay? This is kind of important. So, I'm a numbers guy, this is exactly what the numbers were taking. The average value for any one of those is the total value of that class, as the state requires us to report, divided by the number of parcels in that class. That's how I do it, that's how Boston does it, that's how everybody does it. And that's what you see right here. And what stands out at you? The average commercial tax bill is going down thirty-three dollars and forty-one cents, or three tenths of one percent. That didn't look right to me. And I've been looking at it and examining it, and the next slide, I want to point out some distinct, I want to say issues, but... So, I'm gonna read the bottom, the bottom caveat down there. I put another column in, it says, "Commercial," as noted below. So, there are six parcels that were part of the Sacred Heart Church complex, and a town owned parcel that was formerly exempt, and now are part of the taxable commercial class. Their values are relatively low, and bring down the average commercial property of the last year. This distorts the average commercial parcel value, and therefore, the average commercial tax bill, along with the change from last year. In addition, commercial parcel located at four ninety-five Main Street had their building demolished and is now land-only. They're still located, they're still included in that average value, but the building is gone, it's land-only now, so it went down somewhat dramatically. So, as all commercial parcels are listed in the single commercial class, which consists of only two hundred and four parcels, these eight parcels distort the value to the average commercial tax bill. To adjust for this and to allow a valid comparison to Alaska's average commercial, average bill, I considered a column where these six parcels are removed from the comparison. So, in that red column over there, I took out the value of those eight parcels and the number eight, and I re-divided it, and that's how you come up with that, that value of five hundred sixty-eight thousand. If you multiply that by the tax rate, it gives you that average value of eleven thousand sixty-four, and that's actually a two hundred ninety-seven dollar increase, two hundred seven, two point seven six percent, which is what you would expect. So, I want to make real clear on this, there's only two hundred and four parcels there, if you put eight in there, that have a much lower value. And two of those parcels are unbuiltable land and valued at like ten thousand dollars. So, ten thousand dollars has a huge effect on the average value of five hundred sixty-eight thousand, so...
So, and, question to, to, and you might not be able to answer it tonight, but, I mean, on Monday night, that four ninety-five Main Street was burned down.
Yeah.
What was the value of that building before that?
Oh, it didn't burn down, they tore it down. That's the one across from Wells, that's the one across from...
Okay, so Vienna, but you also...
No, it was Beethwaite.
Beethwaite, right? But, okay, but what about, also, you have to look at the parcel of land that used to be on Main Street that burned down. That parcel, that's vacant land.
But that's not from last year.
But that would have been part of the commercial if you were to add that in last year, remember?
Yeah, exactly, that's a very good point.
We didn't, you didn't bring that up last year, but that's another parcel that should be a building that has value of whatever.
So, the comparison from two years ago to last year, I didn't bring it up, because I'm a numbers guy, these are what the numbers came out. But when I looked at it this year, I said, "Why the heck would it go down like this? It shouldn't have, because if you remember a slide from much, much earlier, the average commercial value went up, whatever, four, five, six percent." And it's like, this doesn't make sense, so I started dissecting and digging down into...
And Sacred Heart was always a tax exempt land, right?
Yeah, exactly, so when it got purchased by, I think it's Rivera Real Estate Development or something, there were six parcels, it was tax exempt, not included in any of this, now it is. He paid something, I think it was three hundred fifty thousand dollars for all these properties. And you get the old dilapidated, the old convent, you get the old rectory, they don't have a lot of value, so they lower all of this.
All the values.
And, so I wanted to point that out, because I think it's worth noting.
It is, no, it is.
So, anyway, so, this tells, this chart here talks about the changes to the property tax. The average condo's going up only thirteen dollars. Now, that's, I wouldn't say it's misleading, but last year, condos got hit dramatically hard, they had double-digit increase. They go, so the sales last year indicated that they went up dramatically, the sales this year stabilized from there, that's why they're not changing much from last year. Last year, I don't know, remember the number from last year?
That was huge.
The condo was sixteen percent.
Yeah, it was huge. So, over two years, it's eight percent, and it kind of, and this stuff all returns to me, in finance, they call it reversion to the mean, everything kind of comes back to the averages over time. So, anyway, a single family, the average single family is gonna go up three point eight nine percent. Average two and three family, two point seven four. Last year, they got hit a little bit harder. Vacant land is actually going down a little bit, for two reasons. Number one, the values didn't change on land, on land, there's no evidence of that. If they didn't change and everybody else's value went up, they're paying a little bit less a share of the tax bill. And another big thing on that is, and I hate to get into the weeds like this, but it's really important to understand all these details. In the vacant land class, there are nine very large parcels that, multiple, many acres, like seventy, eighty acre parcels, that previously were valued in the hundreds of thousands of dollar range. And those property owners have put them into Chapter 61, which is a state-approved program. If they qualify, you have to, they approve. So, we have nine parcels in that vacant land class that were, and I don't want to, because that commercial went only at two hundred and four parcels, I felt I could do that adjustment and show it. In the land classes, hundreds of parcels, I didn't think that was appropriate, but I pointed out here, but again, land is in the residential class. So, I'm gonna jump onto the next one, this we've already seen. So, again, the Board of Assessors recommends a factor one, a single tax rate. Tax-wise, how do we compare? According to the DOR last year, the average single-family tax bill in state was fifty-seven eighty-nine. In Southbridge last year was thirty-seven seventy-eight. So, we were, 2011 less, we're thirty-four percent less than the state average. They rate this stuff, the average single-family tax bill, Southbridge was the two hundred sixty-fifth lowest out of the three hundred and thirty-three total, and that puts us in the lowest twenty point two percent. So, you say to yourself, three hundred thirty-two, there's three hundred fifty-one communities, what about that? So, the state, anybody who has that residential exemption, they can't compare it, so they take it out of all of the analysis. So, just wanted to point that out. Alright, cap out.
Thank you for sharing, real quick to Will. So, a number that always pops up going, you say two sixty-five out of three thirty-two, and then somebody will turn around and say, "We're at the top twenty, as far as the tax rate is concerned."
Yeah, in terms of what that number comes out to, that is possible, but I actually have a slide in a little bit that's kind of gonna illustrate a little bit of this, if I could, if I could just punt it down a couple...
Sure, no problem.
So, this year, our, at the projected tax rate in nineteen forty-eight, average single-family tax bill will be the thirty-nine twenty-five, which we've already talked about. So, this just shows, the maroon is Southbridge, the green is the state average, and just shows how for the last twenty-five years, we've actually diverse a little bit, spread, they've gone up at a higher rate than the town has, but you can see the difference in the spread from way back. So, to Councillor Adams' point, so, this is a slide, this is all of our area and similar towns, what their tax rate is, what our tax rate is, what their average single-family tax bill is, and how that relates. So, Southbridge last year, our tax rate was twenty thirty-eight. Our average value was a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and that means the average person paid thirty-seven seventy-eight. So, Sturbridge, right below that, their tax rate is lower, nineteen fifteen. Oh, so they must have lower taxes. But their average value is at two hundred ninety-four thousand, so that translates up to five thousand six hundred forty-two dollars in a tax bill, and they have a three percent surcharge, which comes out to approximately about a hundred fifty dollars on that. Charlton, their tax rate's fourteen seventy-seven. Okay, yeah, quite a bit lower, but their average property value, two eighty-one, two hundred eighty-one thousand, so they paid, on average, four thousand one sixty-two. Auburn, a split tax rate, but eighteen forty-three residential, you see their value's two hundred sixty-three thousand, so the average person paid forty-eight hundred. Dudley, their, Dudley, Dudley is a, it's hard to really compare them, because they don't have quite the services, but their tax rate last year was thirteen point five, very, very low, but their average value is twenty-five hundred, so their average bill, thirty-four hundred. They're close to us, reasonably close. But if you look to the column on the far right, last year, the average bill in Dudley went at five hundred and eighty-four dollars. In Southbridge, it went up two hundred and three, Sturbridge, two thirteen, Charlton, three ninety-one. So, you can see we're on the low end of all of that, with the exception of Webster. So, Webster, the tax rate is fifteen thirty-three last year, and their average value, two sixty-three, so the average bill is four thousand thirty-nine. So, we're either comparable or lower than all of our neighbors, and you can see our tax rate was lower only by a hair than where. So, it's what they multiply out to, I think, is the important thing. I try to, I try to show all the information, not just one side of it, because I would love our tax rate to be lower, but this is how what the math does. Okay, I'm gonna jump to the next one.
Property values went way up, our tax rate would be lower, because it's based on the valuation.
So, I did this map here, I did this map here today, I couldn't, basically, this is all the three hundred and fifteen cities and towns. The ones I highlighted in yellow are the only ones between Worcester and between Springfield that have a split tax rate. So, you have Worcester here, you have the town of Auburn right here, you have, what's this, Fitchburg up here, and over here, you have Springfield, and to the west of that is Holyoke, West Springfield, and I can't think of the other one, Chickopee. Incidentally, very, very interesting point, right down here, you have the town of Webster. They had a split tax rate forever. Last year was the first time they cut it back to a single tax rate. So, this here is a chart that was in the Webster paper last year. So, this shows you what their tax rates were this year. So, we've talked about, you can split the tax rate from a factor of one all the way up to one point five zero. If you were at, that's all we could do. But if you were at one point five zero a few years ago, the state gave you permission to push it up to one point six. If you were at one point seven five, the cities like Boston and Worcester, they got permission to knock it up even higher. But, so, this is the town of Webster, this is this big trouble about this. So, in 2002, they shifted the maximum of one point six percent. And it stayed that way until 2007, at one point six percent. And then their town, as a town, decided, "We want to get back to that factor of one," which is trust, very, very difficult. So, what they did in 2008, they narrowed it slightly, and they shifted that little bit of that point one oh one, that went from the commercial to the residential. The next year, they shifted another ten, and then a couple more, then a couple more, a couple more, then one point three six, and then they shifted even more back to the residential. And then the next year, in 2016, even more, seventeen, even more, last year, even more, until they finally got, in 2019, they got back to a single tax rate. So, and I can tell you, I've had a property in Webster since nineteen ninety-four. Webster's tax bills, forgetting about all of this, because they were voting a lot of stuff, a lot of overrides, a lot of municipal projects, their tax bills were going up dramatically, forgetting about this. And in addition, they did this. So, every single year that I can remember on my property in Webster, I got hammered. I got hammered as they shifted that to one. But now they've got factor of one, assuming they don't do that again, and that was their goal as a town, because they felt that was important to keep commercial, industrial, development, attract new businesses and all of the stuff we've talked about, but now they're a factor of one, okay? Fitchburg, and the reason I'm showing you guys this stuff, I know it's on your mind, and I talk to assessors all the time. The assessor in Fitchburg told me a few months ago, they're looking to get back to a factor of one. So, in nineteen, oops, I'm sorry. In nineteen ninety-two, their split was a one hundred forty percent shift from the residential to the commercial. He just told me this stuff over the phone, so that's why I put S today, because if you look it up, it might be one point two eight, or whatever, I just wanted to. So, in 2014, it was one point two four percent. Last year, they got it down to one point oh six, and they're hoping to get it to one point oh this year. So, communities, communities that do, if they desire to get back, it's very, very traumatic, but they feel it's important. So, that's it on my presentation. I've got some other information, if you have specific questions, I could go on, I don't want to go on, but if you have questions, I have probably stuff that'll answer for you.
Questions? After this.
First off, I did, I asked...
Um, first off, I did, I asked Devan to print out a couple things, could I do some homework? Pass those along?
Sure. I already got some things. I'll be a little.
What's that? Oh, how do you? Thank you.
Yeah, I got that.
We have more?
Yeah, there's other stuff.
Even more. Fantastic. Thank you.
I guess the other's coming around. That's yours. The other ones are coming around.
Anyone need one?
Okay. What I'm passing around is stuff that I sent to you mostly by email. But, and I had asked Devan to print up a couple copies, that she gave us and not everybody. But there are just, there are just some comparisons of residential exemptions from a variety of communities. You've got the generic, the general list here, which I actually got from Malden. Although, there's a few towns in here that are not included in this, like Province Town. There's a few others that are, that are not here. But that's what they had me. And I was thinking it was interesting, because I was talking, I talked specifically to Malden, Watertown, and Chelsea. Because I figured, although you're right, they're much bigger communities. I figured economically, they're from a socioeconomic split, kinda, kind of similar to ours, others are much bigger than ours. And some of, and in many cases, their, their split between residential and commercial is fairly similar to ours. So, I thought that they were, they were reasonably comparable. And I thought it was interesting because talking to them, among other things, let's see, the one who talked at most length was Malden. So, and they kinda, so I asked him a little bit about little details on how, how the residential exemption works, what kind of issues they saw trying to, trying to go into it, how long they've been in it. Most of these towns have been in it for quite a while. One of them started in twenty-six, I think it was. And the processes are always pretty much the same. In many, in many cases, they, I mean, obviously, you have to apply, you have to apply at the beginning. And then once you, once you get, if I understood it properly, once you get certified, you're kind of in the system until you sell the property. And then they pay off, they get their exemptions in the half that goes into their third quarter bill, and the other half goes into their fourth quarter bill, of whatever the exemption calculates to be. And that depends on what we wanted to, if we do this, it would depend on how we voted it, anywhere, as Will mentioned, up to thirty-five percent. That's actually a relatively new thing. It was originally like thirty percent until, or I guess it was originally twenty percent until like a year ago. And then the legislature changed that. Although, there were a couple of communities that had exemptions for that, because they got special legislation to do it. Anyway, so, I was talking to Malden's chief assessor, Jim O'Brien. And let's see, so a lot of this stuff's coming from him. For example, they have thirteen thousand properties, twelve thousand, roughly twelve thousand, which are residential. They started in two thousand and eight. And about sixty-seven percent of their resident, of their, of their household get, about sixty-seven percent of their residential properties get a tax exemption, which is about eighty-five hundred properties. I mean, he said that that's been pretty consistent for quite a few years now. As he pointed out, year one was a nightmare in terms of getting mass mailing. A lot of people didn't trust it, what they were reading. A lot of people didn't really understand what they were reading. So, they got some complaints at the very beginning. And they had to kind of tweak it to get people to understand what was going on. But eventually, people got on board and they figured out what was going on. And so, they had a bad response at first, at the very beginning. So, they ended up taking the town, the city clerk's polling books and based their outreach on that in terms of, they figured basically that if you were registered to vote there, you know, pretty good chance that you actually own the property. And you were actually living there. Because the way it's set up is that you cannot, you cannot take an exemption on a property you don't actually own. You don't actually live it. However, there are, there's like one kind of caveat to that, is if you have a trust, and you, and multiple people that live in the trust, have the trust, as long as one of the people in the trust lives in the building, they can take an exemption for that, although all of the people in the trust don't have to be there. So, there's certain caveats to that. And I'm not, I'm not like a lawyer, so I'm not gonna try to get into that. They, every year, they try to ID the properties that change hands. And you have to live in the given property by January first of that year to claim the taxes for the coming fiscal year. So, that, Jennifer says that counts here, you're right. And they would do a mailing for all of their sold properties annually. And if they didn't get, you know, if they didn't get a deed reported, or if they didn't get some neighbor, as he put it, ratting them out, that somebody wasn't living there, they would basically just let it roll over as an exempted property. They're, all the cities that I talked to are, they're all split-rate cities. I am not sure, and I've got a bunch of other messages out, so I'm not sure how many of the communities that do this don't have split rates. Obviously, most of the cities do have split rates. One thing, you can't do it if it's owned by an LLC. You can do it if, for example, you have, say, a hundred apartments on the property, provided the individual who owns the apartments actually lives in the complex. However, the vast majority of those kinds of complexes are owned by corporations or LLCs, so they're usually, they usually can't get the exemption. There's, I don't quite understand how this would be calculated, maybe you can explain it. It's about the break-even point between high-value and low-value properties. In some cases, in some cases, both can qualify, but some properties, and some, some properties, the break-even will actually end up paying more in taxes. And he mentioned in Malden, about eighty-nine, about eighty-nine properties were above that break-even point. Out of their, you know, eighty-five hundred that actually got exemptions. I haven't explained it properly, I haven't understood what you're saying. And last year, in this current year for them, about, about the average bill, the average deduction is twenty-two-hundred-and-sixty-one bucks, which has gone up a bit from last year. The lowest value properties, the tax bill is almost, almost wiped out. However, state law says you have to have a minimum of at least ten percent. So, they would take that and calculate it based on the single rate without a residential exemption. So, and the way they started, they babysat starting at five percent, and then they worked up to figure this out at thirty percent now, over the course of several years. At the time, until recently, as I mentioned, twenty percent was the cap. Then Somerville did it, and one of the other communities whose name I'm escaping right now. And then the State's Municipal Modernization Act opened it up to thirty percent for everybody, and Somerville jumped to thirty-five. And you see, as you walk through, that's another two. So, so I thought that that'd be, I thought I'd pass these around. You can see kind of the changes in some of these communities. And whether or not, this is something that we as a community wanna seriously consider. I figured this is the time to think about it before, obviously, we actually set the tax rate.
I just, I guess I'm, I feel like I'm hearing kind of half the story. So, if they get a residential tax break, they get the exemption, they get a lower tax rate, that shift went somewhere, right?
It went into the, into the higher-value residential properties.
Right, but does that, and I guess my question maybe is, Will, it goes on to higher residential properties. It's a pretty big shift if most of the people got a tax break compared to the few houses that are above that standard. But does it also shift to your commercial property too, or is it only on, that would be a huge shift on residential, just for the higher-end houses?
I actually have some analysis that'll kind of illustrate it for you.
That'd be good.
So, can I just, while you're defining that real quick, just here, if you don't, so what it sounds to me is you're talking about towns with split rate already. So, it's already, it's already low on the residential, right? And the CIP is going up, correct? And then you do a tax exemption, or you do the exemption part where the higher-valued homes pay a little bit more?
Yeah.
And then the lower-valued homes go further down by the tax rate?
Essentially, yes.
It's on a split?
They get a deduction, yes. But it's in the residential class.
Because you're shifting so much of the taxes off to lower house prices, you're just gonna be a huge, not a small tax increase, the higher price, it's seriously high-impacted on wealthy houses if you have wealthy houses that, you know.
I want me to jump in. That's why I'm bringing it up, that's, it sounds like to me is because they have split rate, twice the single.
Because they're already doing it.
They're already doing it. They're already, they're lowering it for the split rate.
No, the split, the split rate doesn't, but doesn't apply to the residential.
No, but they're already, they're already. But they're already taxing the commercial at a higher rate.
Yeah, they are.
So, they're capturing money more.
This isn't effective.
So, let's have a little bit of analysis. Yeah, it's very, very confusing. So, I got, I got a few slides that'll help you.
Okay.
So, this right here is off of the, off of the Department of Revenue. This is one of the ways, one of the sheets that we use to calculate all this stuff. Sorry, I can't see it all that well. But what this does, what it shows is, the residential class is eight-hundred in the upper left, eight-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand in value. And it brings to the one built in one-twenty-six. You go down a little bit further, I estimate there's about thirty-four-seventy-two eligible parcels in the residential class. Out of, we're in the middle section, out of five-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventeen. On this particular one, I calculated the maximum at thirty-five percent. I don't know if you can see where I'm pointing, but, right, yeah, thirty-five percent. And that, what that means is, the total value of the residential class, lest the exemptions, come, drops to six-hundred-and-seventy-two million from the eight-hundred-and-eighty-two million. But the residential class still has to pick up all of the tax burden of the residential class. So, what happens is, down this very bottom here, the calculator here from the DOR site, so the personal, the CIP tax rate nineteen forty-eight. And this twenty, the residential rate would jump to twenty-five, fifty-five, okay? Because we're exempting some of the residential value. And keep in mind, this is the highest one right here, which is what I captured through the screenshot. It would be, so the residential tax rate you'd be paying wouldn't be nineteen forty-eight anymore. Everybody, include everybody, owner-occupied or not, would be paying this twenty-five, fifty-five. But what happens is, you can get an exemption on the value of your property if you live there, owner-occupied. Which I have stuff to show you on that. So, but again, I would just wanna point out, so the tax rate for the residential jumped from nineteen forty-eight to twenty-five, fifty-five. Okay? So...
I know. Just, Will, if you don't mind, so that's based on a single tax rate, correct? So, but it would probably change if it was a split rate, correct? It's going up because your parcels, because based on your parcels, those are average, right? The thirty-four-seventy-two?
That's the number of eligible parcels. It's not an average, it's just.
Well, okay, so you're talking about, because it's a single rate, that's why our tax rate would actually go further up if we did some type of exemption?
It would, yeah, if you do an exemption, it would go up.
Based on a single rate?
Even if it was, if it was a split rate, the same thing would happen. I, I, I mean, I don't have the calculations in front of me, but if the tax rate, a single tax rate is nineteen forty-eight for everybody, and we split the tax rate, ten percent shifted it to the commercial. We have a slide there that said what the rate would have been, but, so the commercial tax rate would have gone up a little bit. Residential tax rate would have gone down a little bit. And then, if we did this in addition, that residential rate that, I'm gonna make up a number, let's call it nineteen dollars from nineteen forty-eight. So, it would have gone down to nineteen dollars. But then, when you put in this residential exemption into the calculation, it would have jumped back up to, I don't know, twenty-five dollars? Something like that. To me, this is a shell game, I have to be honest with you.
I can understand the value, because it.
Well, we'll get to that.
Hold on, hold on. One at a time.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you have to.
So, I have, I have some slides to illustrate this, so. So, where, I can't lie. So, right here, this. So, based on the number of residential properties that qualify, the average residential value is a hundred-and-seventy-two thousand. So, if we did a ten percent, and that's just what this one has. So, if the average debt residential value is a hundred-and-seventy-two, ten percent means you'd have a residential exemption amount of seventeen thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-nine. So, if we only did ten percent, if one tax rate is nineteen forty-eight, the residential tax rate with a ten percent exemption jumps to twenty dollars and ninety cents. And again, seventeen thousand, two-thirty-nine would get subtracted from every owner-occupied residential property. So, this first whole thing here says, these are the, these are just values so we can get an idea along that. The one that's in gold, that's the average single-family value that we calculated before, to get an average single-family tax. So, the nineteen forty-eight tax rate, single tax rate, the average tax on a single family is thirty-nine, twenty-five. So, if you continue over, this middle section is, with a ten percent residential exemption, that, remember, the tax rate would jump up to twenty-ninety, but we're gonna exempt seventeen thousand from every owner-occupied property. So, the average person with a ten percent would save seventy-four dollars and fourteen cents. But if your value was lower than that, you would save more money. If your value was higher than that, you would save less money until the break-even point is over here. So, if you, if you had a house that's valued at two-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, somewhere in a ballpark, you'd break even, even if it was owner-occupied. If your value was higher than that, and it's not all that high, your taxes would actually go up, even if you were owner-occupied. Okay? The stuff on the right is where it really.
Pain.
Gets hairy. So, the average, the average value, the average person, average value, single family, if it didn't have the residential exemption, would go up two-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars. If you had a higher-priced property, you know, where, over here, it would go three-fifty-five through sixty-nine. Now, I only put a hundred-and-fifty thousand to three-hundred thousand, because I wanted this thing big enough so you could actually read it. But I wanna point something else out. Two slides over, three slides over. So, this is the same thing, this is using that thirty-five percent, okay? But I inserted two new numbers down here that are important to note. So, the very bottom one is our largest apartment complex. This is Rose Need. Their value this year, last year was fourteen million something. This year, their value is sixteen million nine. If we do nothing, in just, just a normal nineteen forty-eight, their tax bill is going up by ten percent. And that's indicative of the apartment class, okay? Do nothing, don't do this. Their tax bill's going up ten percent, and their tax bill is gonna be three-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand. So, with the thirty-five percent residential exemption, they wouldn't qualify. So, even though the numbers here, they wouldn't qualify, you go to the far right over here, their tax bill would be four-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand. So, so that's an increase of a hundred and two thousand over with, if we didn't adopt that thing. But it's also, with this thing, is ten percent more than it was last year. So, that's something like a Rose Need. Now, I know Rose Need, it's a big apartment complex and all of that stuff, but there's still residents who live there. But the one I wanna really point out, because, I'll be honest with you, I think this stuff is, I just think this is a very unfair thing. But this one right here, this value of three-hundred, three-million-six-hundred-seven thousand, this is another apartment building in the downtown. And in nineteen forty-eight, their tax bill is seventy thousand, two-eighty-one. I don't remember how much this one went up, but it went up from last year. They don't qualify over here under the, because they're not owner-occupied. Although, the way you just said it, that kind of surprises me. Well, that doesn't surprise me. Because if you have a two-family owner-occupied, you get it. If you have a four-family owner-occupied, you get it. You have a hundred-unit building and you wanna live there, you get it.
If you're an individual and you can't do it as an LLC, then.
Right, but okay, let's go all the way over to the right here. So, this property, the tax rate would be twenty, residential tax rate would be twenty-five, fifty-five. Their property tax bill would be ninety-two thousand, going up to twenty-one thousand, eight ninety-nine. This property, the reason I haven't identified it, because this applies to everybody. This is tag. This is, this is senior housing. People live in this stuff, that's.
It raises your rent.
Yeah, I don't know, but I'm just trying to illustrate. There's, there's people in all these places. So, but anyway, this illustrates how it works. Does anybody have any questions on how it works?
Just to be clear, companies like Rose Need or the others, they're not gonna eat that cost. They're gonna pass it on to users. So, it just means that those people who are renting are gonna get hit even more, so their leases are gonna go up by the difference. They're just gonna pass it on.
Same with the commercial.
Yeah, you're right, commercial's gonna pass it on to customers in terms of cost of goods, right?
So, that's pretty much what I have. I got a lot of, I can answer any questions, but that kind of brings up the points that I thought were worth making. Captain McPhee?
Have you ever heard of a land value tax? That's a tax on vacant property and underdeveloped property, or maybe that's an empty building, where you would put it at a tax rate in order to encourage them to develop. They wouldn't wanna hold on to it. If they're vacant, they're getting taxed more on vacant land if they wanna hold on to it. But I was looking into it, you can go online, read some articles about it. It's just called a land value tax. Assessments on property as a way to improve downtrodden areas, and in some cases, raise revenue. Taxes, higher levies on vacant property, which increases a landlord, landowner's cost of holding on to unused or distressed property are heralded as a way to eliminate blight and drive development. And to me, it's, it makes sense to me as a win-win for the community. Because different properties and distressed properties are burning on the town. So, when I look at your tax rate here, I don't think I would be interested in splitting the residential class, just that. But when I look at this and I see that vacant land, they're not, they're getting a tax decrease. I don't see how that's an incentive for them to develop the land. decrease, I don't see how that's an incentive for them to develop the land. They're just gonna hang on to it. And, so I've read about land value taxes as a way to increase revenue for the town, but if they develop it, then the taxes go back down. So it's a win-win, in my, in my opinion.
So my response to that is two things. The residential class, I mean, the land, when I show you vacant land and property tax bills are going down, residential, I'm sorry, vacant land in the vast majority that there is in the residential class. I can't change it, you can't change it, state law. So if we shifted the tax rate, the land that we're talking about, instead of going down a little bit like the show, yeah, it would just go down more. As far as the vacant land tax, I'd have to ask, what state is that? Because we don't have the ability to implement local taxation on the state. What state are you talking about?
I believe it's available in every state. I mean, you don't own it.
It's nothing that I'm aware of. I, I know the Department of Revenue has said this before in some other, you can't, we can't do anything locally.
Good question. I gotta ask too, and I don't know if it says it in your, wherever you have it, is that just on buildable vacant land? If you have a lot of land that's not buildable, how does that factor into, into what they're talking about?
Such as?
Is that?
Such as?
I'm just wondering, if, if the increased cost is on non-buildable land, you're gonna hit taxpayers that can't do anything about it, is it only on buildable land? Well, it has to be land that's gonna be building on, that you can actually build a house or something on. If it's not as buildable, you can't build on it, you're gonna increase the costs of the land, they can't build on it no matter what. So, that's my question, is that based on just buildable land, or what is it?
Or, if you have a house that is just, they are not rented, and it's a distressed property and no one's renting it, and they're not doing it, and they're just letting it go, you would have a tax, a higher tax. But, I don't know, you know, maybe it's like you said, maybe we can't do it, it's just something that I've been looking into as a way to raise revenue.
Oh, no, thank you, appreciate it, thank you, Joe.
To me, it's a win-win. If you can't do what you can do.
Could you?
I know that, I was talking to Rosemary last night, I don't know if she's still...
She's right there.
She was saying something about a fee on distressed properties. She can speak for herself.
Well, we, we did add a little bit of a fee for abandoned property, if it's only a hundred or two hundred bucks or something, that was part of the blight thing they added you, you have to register vacant houses and stuff. So there is a small fee. I don't remember off the top of my head if it's a hundred bucks or two hundred bucks, but that is something we did under the blight law.
Can I just mention one other thing that I mentioned last night, and you brought that up? That for empty storefronts, there are communities that have a fee. It's similar to what we talked about, where at the beginning of the year, you know, a landlord would have to register that they have an empty storefront, but it's pretty obvious. And then there would be a fee until they filled it. But it would have to be, they filled it with a, one of a list of acceptable tenants.
And the, and the other thing is, I don't know.
No, that's right.
You know, when I see that, it's always the same thing every year. And I know that you could shift this if you wanted to, but it always seems every year that the town council doesn't wanna shift. But when I see that commercial or industrial, industrial would pay a thousand dollars more if we shifted it just ten percent. And I would save a couple hundred dollars if you shifted it ten percent. For me, I'm retired, I'm on a fixed income, I know a lot of people in town are on a fixed income, I'm on social security, I don't get a raise like that. A hundred and forty dollars means a lot to me. But for someone like United Lens, which I read last year, they paid a hundred and sixty-nine thousand in taxes, a thousand dollars is nothing. It's, now they're paying a hundred and seventy thousand. So to me, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to shifting it just ten percent, that would help me. But I know that the town council has always gone along with the one point of view, I always felt that it's fairer for at least some kind of a shift, especially for people like me who are fixed income. That's all we can do.
Before, Greg, can I just, just one quick question, I wanna get to the commercial and industrial. When you shift, it's commercial and industrial, correct?
Yeah.
You can't split it up?
No, CIP, commercial, industrial, and personal property.
All right. So I know we always talk about the big companies like Hyde's, you know, little big manufacturers, but commercial, commercial properties also include the mom and pop shop. So you have the Spire on South Street, which is, you know, struggling to stay open. You shift the burden to that, the smaller, it also affects that class too, correct?
What's, what's your cars or your automobile, whatever?
Personal, personal.
Well, there's still an increase though, I mean, so they have to pass it on to consumers. So you're talking auto body shops, you know, and all those. So it's not just the big employees, that's my point. It's not just the big employees you're talking about.
Except I'm on a, I'm on a...
I, I understand that, I'm just saying...
Income that goes up, a fixed income, whereas auto body, you can charge more for...
I certainly respect that, but what I'm trying to say is, when we keep talking commercial, industrial, we always talk about the big guys, and we don't talk about the barber shop that's trying to struggle to stay up and all that.
I understand, they're not gonna be paying a thousand.
What I'm saying, counselor, is that we also have to reflect that that class is included. I respect that it's not a thousand dollars, but you're still passing on a cost to another. Counselor Steve?
Um, yeah, a couple, a couple of questions, first of all.
Well, counselor, to be honest with you, I'm a residential owner too, and I have property just like everybody else, everybody. We all talk about this, but we're trying to be thoughtful to make sure that we look out for the whole town, and my point is, we can't just keep saying, industrial, the big guy. There are the smaller shops and building owners that have property that struggle as well. And if we want to make sure we bring some of those smaller shops that might revitalize this town, we have to have, make sure that whatever we do, we do it prudent. You're not the only one that has taxes. I, I also look out for family members as well that are on fixed incomes. So when I look at it, I also weigh that part too, so don't make it sound like you're the only one. We all have families, we all have those struggles. You're not the only one, but we have to look out and try to make the best fiscal policy for the entire town. And I just wanted to make you note, that's why I always say the big guy. There are the little guys out there that are struggling as well. That can't pass on the money to the consumer at a coffee shop that's struggling to stay open. Yeah, it might not be a thousand dollars, but they're still struggling, they have to absorb that cost somehow. Counselor Steve?
Um, yeah, I got a couple of questions. And first off, I wanna dovetail back a second ago, from when you were, Mike, when you were talking about the land value taxes, and it seemed like it wasn't getting explained all that well. I would agree with trying to do something about the properties that are distressed downtown that are just being left vacant. But some of, a lot of that, a lot of those properties are also, like, often the boonies where they don't even have road access. I think that's part of the issue. Is that some of those you can't even access, except by walking through woods for like, you know, half a mile. They're legally a property, they may have a bunch of acres, but you can't do anything with it. So it's not developable. And honestly, some of that stuff should be protected anyway for, for environmental reasons. But the questions that I had for Will are, how, how would it, how would the CIP tax rate be affect, of splitting a CIP, the, splitting the rate affect mixed use properties?
Great question. So, Main Street, great example, we just talked about the distressed properties in downtown. So if we did that, starting, walk out here, walk across the street, get the store on the corner of Central, that's a commercial property. That would, that would be shifting taxes to them. Because understand, I value property at full and fair cash value. That's my mandate, it's, the law tells me I have to do that. I can't say I wanna value you, yours higher, or yours lower, whatever, I can't do that. It's not allowed, it's not allowed by the, it's against the law. And if I did, you would take, say, I'm taking you to a, to court, and you'd get knocked down in a heartbeat, I just can't do that.
Right, there shouldn't be one.
So you get back to the properties, and I'm pretty aggressive with all of my evaluations. Some people complain about that, but I'm aggressive. I, you know, my property's in rough shape, it's, well, that's, I'm not gonna give you a discount because it's in rough shape, I'm fairly aggressive about it. So, but anyway, we walked, we walked across the street, we're looking at Fidel's on the left, and those big, big buildings with the boards up?
Yeah.
They're getting it. Then you, they, they're commercial, they would be shifted. You walk a little further, we have Linda's and a couple empty storefronts, that's commercial.
Well, I'm thinking the ones that have apartments above them. Like, well, Linda's building is one of them.
Yeah, so we have a percent, like, well, so we have a percentage on every building, how much of it is the mixed use properties you're talking about?
Right.
So the commercial part is a, is a pot of value. Let's say it was fifty percent. It would get the benefit of a fifty percent on the residential side, relaxing a little bit, and it would get hit on the fifty percent. But those commercial, those are mixed use properties, and not many, they're not many. Like, like Counselor Jovan said, you go down these streets and you see a lot of mom and pops, those get hit. And I got, one of my board of assessors members asked me to talk about this. He works for a company that was located in Worcester. We know, that's one of the reasons that we're so adamant about this. He works for a company that was located in Worcester. His, his company moved there, the split rate forced them to close their branch and move away, because the owner of the company said, this is crazy, we're paying far more in Worcester, they just closed it and moved away. So now he's transferred to another place that they own. This happens all the time in split rates towns. I mean, we all, we all see it. And I also wanna say, people say, there aren't many communities that shift to a commercial rate. There are, there are quite a few that are already a commercial rate. There aren't too many that shift. Why are they a commercial rate? The way it all kind of began was, back in the nineteen seventies, people like me were much more political, and they would look and they'd say, okay, let's value all the residential properties at sixty percent of fair market value, and let's value the commercial properties at a hundred percent. There was routine all through the state. And so there was a big law case, law case by one of the large companies in Boston, that forced, it went all the way to the Supreme Court, forced the standard to full and fair cash value. So when that happened, all these residential properties had to go dramatically higher, because they had to be at full and fair cash value. There was an uproar, it was almost a revolution, that's when Prop two and a half got passed. And part of Prop two and a half, the way to combat that was, you could classify, you could split the rate, which allowed you to get back, to go after those commercial and industrial again. Because everybody has to be a hundred percent, these guys were a hundred percent before, everyone else was down here, well, this was the tool to go after them. So a lot of these places split the rate back then, and it's hard to go away from it. And if you're in the Boston area or all of that kind of thing, everybody does it.
Mostly not.
That's your competition, you don't have to worry about it. But out here, like I said, you have Worcester, Auburn, Pittsburgh, and Pittsburgh's something going through a picture one, and you have Springfield, Coleo, Chickapi. None of the other competitors around here.
Okay.
I don't mean free access.
Okay, well, thank you. Follow up with that is, so how, would it be possible to create a rural agricultural zone that has its own tax rate?
Has what, its own tax rate?
Like, like, like you mentioned, that a lot of, a lot of the vacant land is now currently, is currently taxed at the residential rate. But if we were to create a rural agricultural zone for some of the, like, the outlying parts that are, the big parcels that are basically vacant half the time, what, would it be possible to create a special, a zone that, would, would, is there a legal, a way, a legal way to have that be taxed at a different rate than residential properties?
So I don't think so. The Department of Revenue is very, very clear with every question that I bring to them on any issues about can we do this, can we do this? We can't make up tax law. But to answer your question, those properties are already kind of taken care of.
A lot of them are.
So, yeah, so the way, the way it works is, on large parcels, if they have, if there's frontage on the road, that's valued as buildable lots, and that has X value. And then if it's a large parcel and, and the next five acres are at scale, we've determined five thousand an acre worked pretty good when they sell, the next five acres, and then over that five acres, they drop to three thousand an acre, and over twenty acres, they drop to two thousand an acre. So if you have a hundred acre parcel, you value it pretty reasonably.
Oh, okay.
It, it pretty much mirrors what people buy these things for.
Oh, okay.
So, but, you know, if you have a hundred, if you have a big parcel, it's a hundred thousand dollars of value, that means you're paying two thousand dollars in property tax. And if your family's owned it for a long time, and you say, geez, that's too much, but if I put it into chapter sixty-one and do a forestry plan on it, my taxes drop to two hundred dollars.
Right.
That's why they do it.
Okay. And the other question I had is, to go back to the residential exemption proposal, what, what number of properties does South Beach have that would be above the break even value? You cited obviously the two biggest, but do you have an idea of how many?
Well, I can't tell you that, but looking at that chart right there, the gold across, the gold across is the average.
Yeah, I know.
Look at your own houses, look at your own houses, what they're valued at. I'm not gonna say it, but I mean, I, I look at this stuff.
Oh, I see what you mean.
My, my previous house, which I just sold, was valued, is valued somewhere around three hundred thousand dollars, which means even owner occupied, according to there, I'd be going up two hundred something dollars. Even owner occupied, my taxes would increase.
Do you know what the, what, do you know what the most valuable owner occupied house in town is?
It's probably either one of the ones on East Street Road, either that, the one far up on the right with the horse farm, or the old Siminelli, Siminelli one, one of those two I was...
That would be somewhere in the million range?
Yeah, less than that, because there are a lot of depreciation on them, but they're higher, and they're ballpark.
So would you estimate it to be, like, maybe a hundred or less that would be, that would be above that break even range?
I can tell you, the, two, look in there, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in today's market, that's not a high price for a, for a house. There's a lot there, which are at the break even point, there's a lot over. I can tell you, the neighborhood I used to live in, I can't think of anywhere they would save any money, they're probably all the, the break in evening are paying more this year, even owner occupied.
I mean, I know that the newest house that was built up in our neighborhood is four hundred thousand plus, so that would be above it.
I can also tell you, now that you mention it, all the hardwood farm stuff and the over fifty-five housing down off of Pleasant Street with Wildberry and so forth, those houses are all coming in at the two hundred and eighty thousand dollar range, two hundred sixty thousand in value. So that means they're either, even owner occupied, they'd go up, or they'd break even. So. Okay, you all set?
Thanks.
Officer Dana?
Thank you. For my benefit, and for the benefit of those at home, can you describe a little bit about what makes a residential property a residential versus a commercial being a commercial? Just what's comprised of it?
Yeah, it's all according to state law. All according to state law, residential is any kind of apartment, land, apartment building, it could be a nine hundred apartment, unit apartment building, it could be a one unit, it could be a condo, it could be just land. Commercial is, commercial is commercial, and has a, it has a, I can't put it, I think it's difficult. Industrial is obvious. Commercial is, has a... Yeah, retail, any type of monetary purpose other than residential. And residential is kind of obvious too, somebody's gonna live there.
Okay.
But it's all decided by state law.
It is.
In terms of what the categories are. And the residential is any size residential property. Like you said, it could be a million apartments, and that's still residential.
Okay.
So, that's why you included Rosemead, was it, in the bottom of that calculation there?
I did, and actually, I have a, I have something, a quick slide to show you for illustration too. Usually plan a lot of this stuff, in case the question would pass. So, this chart here, these are the top twelve taxpayers in South Beach. If, if we did a shift, so, top one is South Beach Associates, which is the hotel conference center. So their value is thirty-one million, under a single tax rate, they pay six hundred and eight thousand dollars. If we shifted it, you can see in the middle, kind of columns, they would, you know, kind of jump up depending on what we did, and over on the right over here would be the increase, a ten percent shift, their tax bill would go up ten percent. Uh, sixty thousand dollars, I mean. But the second largest taxpayer is Rosemead. But the second largest taxpayer is Rosemead. So if we shifted the tax rate, they're a residential property, their value is 16 million. You shift it 10%, it'll go down 9,000. You shift it 20%, it'll go down 18,000 and so forth. Next one is South Beach Associates too. This is another, the top one, South Beach Associates LLC, is the corporation that owns the Hotel Conference Center. And I think that's also the building where.
UCC.
Yeah, the employment offices and so forth are in. But the second one down here, South Beach Associates, this is all those industrial mill buildings. All, this is all industrial stuff. So this is the value of 11 million. This one's actually going up quite a bit from last year. But you can see on the right, their tax bills would go up, the fare would go up. United Lands, it's an estimate because they own some residential and some commercial industrial stuff, but, so their tax bills would go up, like over here on the right. This one here, Greg Cormier, this is the, this is the total of all of his apartment buildings and so forth. He would go down over here, you see it. Next one is Brookside Terrace, and they would go down, South Village. Nursing Home would go up quite a bit. And that, it's funny, I'm not advocating for any of these businesses, I'm advocating for my town. And that nursing home, anybody who knows that nursing home business, I mean, they file for abatement every year. These places, these places struggle. There's, there's places like that closing all the time. And down here, Liberty Hill Housing, again, that's tagged. If we shifted it, this would go down a little bit. Laurel Ridge would go down. So these apartment, these apartment stuff would go down. And some people argue they're a commercial enterprise. But they're, under the law, they're residential. So, hope that helps.
I do say that to Will's point about fair market value, and I know also Adams and I had this conversation when we looked at values of property. My value of my property, so you talk about taxes, my tax bill this year is going up 1,500 on a single-family home, just because of the valuation of my house. So that's a huge hit for me. I'm not, no, I get a 1,500 increment, so believe me, we all make these decisions basically.
It's only good when you sell it.
I wasn't happy about that. Any further questions about the shift in the rates? There's a lot to digest here for, till Monday on the second.
I have to say a few more things here. So if we decided to do this residential exemption, it would be, in my mind, impossible to do this year. If you guys wanted to do it, you'd have to make the commitment to doing it, and we work towards it for next year. I say that for several reasons.
Well, I'm not saying 35%, but I mean, as I mentioned, Walden started at a five.
Doesn't matter, it could be 1%. So I would say, if you're going to do it, do it for next year. One reason, for one, I mean, you heard what he said, there's a huge amount of work to be done before you can do these things and qualify. I don't know how we have to do it with my existing staff, but that's only one. Second thing is, our financial software is KBS. We're in the process of converting to Munis, which is nightmarish. But at least Munis, if we did this, Munis probably does many of those communities you've talked about over there. The Cambridges and so forth. I don't know. They have the eight hundred pound gorilla, so they most likely do, and the software could handle it. I don't believe I, I don't believe our KBS could. So again, I don't think we would be able to get a tax bill if the residential exemption. I don't think we would be able to get our tax bills, we certainly wouldn't be able to get them out by December 31st, which you have to do in order to have them do, otherwise they'd do much later and so forth. I, even later than that, I don't know how I would do it, but I'm just saying, I just, it would, it would not go out on time. The commercial, if we split the tax rate, that could be done. Although I still don't recommend it. I think it's, in my experience, 30-something years doing this in all the other communities, I, it, you're shooting yourself in the foot if you start chasing it. There's one other factor. So how do you value, for full and fair cash value, how do you value commercial properties? You've heard me say this before, you do an income approach. So whatever they give in rent, minus whatever they come to up to an income, and you capitalize that, that's their value. So if you increase the taxes on them, what does that mean? So that means that net income is a little bit less. You capitalize on that, it's not what it was before. It's less. See, I'm not going to say it's the full amount less, you're chasing tail a little bit, because, so then the next year, you didn't get all you thought, so you do a little more. And then the same thing happens, and it's a little less. So I just really wanted to talk about the logistics of doing those two things. Residential, cannot see how it's possible to do it this year. The splitting of tax rate would be possible, even though I don't recommend it.
Could I just make a comment? Of course, you would expect that an economic development person would rather have you keep the rate at a single rate. But it's not just because that it's not good for business. And I've said this many times, economic development touches everything in a community, and everything in a community touches economic development, and it affects your residents. Obviously, if your economy goes down, that is, votes correlate for your residents, for property values. You're not happy about it when you're paying your tax bill. Would you really rather see all of your property, your residential property values going down? No, you wouldn't. Because then you just have to rebalance anyway to bring in the levy that you need. But anyway, I just want to give you an example of how this would, would be bad for the community. Worcester, I live in Worcester. Worcester has struggled for decades. It's a college town, and we think it would have so much going for it. However, it's had this huge split rate. Right now, it's somewhere around 32 for commercial and industrial, CIP, and around 19 for residential. So I don't own there, but I understand that every time another company leaves Worcester, it means that there's a smaller tax base to spread all that over. And yes, it's booming now, but there's a reason. So the economy is probably at its peak. They have BioTech, which is finally reaping rewards, financial rewards. They're going to get the Paw Sox. But that city has struggled for decades. And a part of it is because of all of these industrial properties and that terribly high tax rate for a commercial and industrial. If you look, I don't know if you've noticed this, but next time you're around Worcester, look at some of the gateways, roadways, right before you hit the border of Worcester, there's a million businesses there. Because those businesses all fled from the city, they still have the benefit of the market, but they're in West Boylston, they're in Shrewsbury, they're in Auburn. You can see that all around the city. And when I was the director for the Mass Office of Business Development, and I was administering the TIF program for Worcester County, I would, it was difficult sometimes to go in and meet with the state board, because they did not like to grant TIPS to businesses in communities with a split tax rate. Because they said, well, you as a community are not representing yourself as business-friendly. Your tax and your business is much higher, and, but now you want to, you want to have it both ways. Now you want to come in and ask us to grant this tax rate for this commercial entity. So that, you know, and Worcester ended up being, they were the biggest user of TIPS in the whole state for a while. And they might still be, because it was the only way they could get businesses to stay or businesses to come in. So I, I just wanted to make that comment. And then also.
Yeah, I was just going to add, yeah, so.
Great, thanks.
I'm sure it's the same letter, but this was a letter that was sent to me, transmitted to Rosemary and myself today. Chairman Jovan, this is from David Livingood, the South Beach Economic Development Commission Chairman. Dear Chairman Jovan, at our EDC meeting of November 20th, 2019, we discussed in length the idea of rate, tax rate split-in. Since our purpose is to help the town of South Beach become better at attracting new businesses and retaining the existing ones, we feel that going to a split tax rate would become a hindrance to attracting new businesses, while also giving the appearance of becoming less building friendly, uh, business friendly. As a commission, we are unified and request that the town council keep a single tax rate with a factor of one. It's well-known that a single tax rate is a plus when attracting new businesses to a town. We'd appreciate the council's support on this respectfully. David Livingood, Chairman of the South Beach Economic Development Commission. So that was transmitted today. Anything for other time? All right. Thank you, Will. We'll see you.
Can do the whole thing again?
Yep.
Entertainer motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?